It's five thirty P M. I'd like to be mindful of our time, so I will call the work session to order. Mister Truesdale, could you please call the role?
Miss Daniels? Miss Davis?
Present.
Miss Green? Mister Jones?
Here.
Miss Rose?
Present.
Mister Rodriguez?
Present.
Miss Bowers?
Present, thank you. Okay, so we have a pretty hefty agenda this evening, so that's why I wanted to make sure we started on time. We're going to deviate from the agenda as printed and begin with the Public Works Committee. So I would defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, the Public Works Committee will be meeting to discuss Resolution Twenty-three of two oh four dash two oh four. Mister Truesdale, can you please read Resolution Twenty-three of, is that two oh four or twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay, of twenty twenty-four, for the record, please.
Resolution Twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg authorizing and appointing Austin Griffin Deputy Director of Public Works as the City of Harrisburg's designee to execute any forms, documents, contracts, and reimbursement agreements in the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Electronic Engineering and Construction Management System and Reimbursement Agreement System.
Thank you for that, and just for the record, it is Resolution Twenty-three of twenty twenty-four. I see Deputy Griffin here. Would you like to step up and give us a quick review of Resolution Twenty-three, please? Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Well, this resolution is to make me the signature.
Is it?
Okay. Good evening, Council.
Thank you.
This resolution is to make me the signatory in the ECMS, PennDOT's ECMS system, which is the Engineering and Construction Management System, which is a site that provides current information on PennDOT's construction projects, construction contracts, and consulting agreements. The Capital Gateway Project at Front and Forrester is a current city project that is being administered through ECMS currently. With the departure of Dan Snow, I will need to be able to go into the ECMS website and fulfill certain obligations on the city's behalf. We currently need to approve the resumes for the consulting, construction inspectors from T W Consultants that PennDOT has chosen to be on this project.
Awesome. So this would be imperative due to Mister Snow stepping down. We would need someone to fill that void.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and would this add any conflict to your current role at all that you know about?
No, but in public works, whatever needs done is our current roles.
Awesome, awesome. All right, I'll open it up for questions, starting to my immediate left, Councilman Jones.
No questions at this time. Thank you. To my right, Councilwoman Rose.
No questions at this time, but good evening. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Good evening. I don't have any questions regarding this resolution. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you. No questions.
All right. If I hear no further questions, one more time, anything further from Council, hearing nothing, I would like to put forward a motion to add this added to our next legislative session, and Deputy Griffin, would you like to add anything before we close it down?
No, sir.
All right, so with that being said, that concludes the work of the Public Works Committee. Pass it back over to Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now go back to the beginning of the agenda with the work of the Administration Committee. We will receive the first quarterly report for two thousand and twenty-four from the Office of Equity and Compliance.
Good, okay, all right. Good evening, Council. I just first like to start off with an apology for missing when the second, when I was out of town, scheduled conflict from the previous work session, so I'll start off with an apology and thankful to still be at the top of the agenda in some way. So we'll just go right into it, and I'll just start off by saying slides one, two, five, six, and seven has remained the same. That's job description, duties, and so forth and so on. With regards to slides three, four, and eight, that's what I'll be addressing this evening, and then of course opening up for questions as you see fit. So our quarterly report reads as follows. Our office continues to have ongoing meetings with disparity study professionals from throughout the nation, working throughout, working throughout the country on best evidence-based best practices. For implementation of the disparity studies recommendations, we have designed a small Mayor's Equity Roundtable Work Group that's prepared to deliver language for Council and Mayor Williams to consider before the end of April twenty twenty-four. Our final small work group is scheduled to meet this Thursday the eighteenth. We've met for a month, a little over a month straight, but officially for one month. Our office was a part of the Visit Hershey-Harrisburg D E I Listening Session as they consider ways to, their organization can be more engaging of current residents and businesses while simultaneously attracting the more diverse population of visitors to the city and its surrounding areas. Our office continues to have ongoing meetings with colleagues who proactively work to ensure D E I efforts up until this point since the summer of twenty twenty, when the murder of Brother Floyd had everybody up in arms and corporations and everyone else was coming out in support of D E I efforts and equity efforts. Now, since the SCOTUS report of last, what, twenty twenty-three, people were seeing that as a way to backtrack and kind of move away from the D E I inequity endeavors that a lot of people had talked about initially. So I've been having ongoing meetings with D E I colleagues to make sure that we fortify some type of a group effort to make sure that if and or when it comes to Harrisburg, we're well-prepared and we all take a stand and with regards to still being, you know, strong on D E I efforts and equity and inclusivity with intentionality. I'll move on to say our office continues to meet with and have open lines of communication with organizations such as, but not limited to, PennDOT's Council on Inclusive Excellence, Center for Independent, excuse me, Center for Independent Living, Department of General Services, and African American Chamber for Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware. Our office has met with Department Directors ongoing since our first quarter meeting, I'm sorry, since our last meeting in which we discussed what I presented to City Council in terms of us doing a better job with intentional inclusivity efforts around how we spend our city public dollars. I'll just go back over our annual goals. Am I supposed to be changing this, or? Okay, I blew it. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
It's all my fault. All right, so I apologize. That was the last slide, talking about our quarterly report, our quarterly summary, rather. And then I'll just go over our office annual goals, which we continue to work more closely with Miss Hillary Green in Procurement Services and Compliance Manager in the City Solicitors' Office. Both offices are aware of, are, and receive ongoing information about the Mayor's Equity Roundtable Small Group Work Sessions around the disparity study recommendations. Advocate, another goal was advocate for additional MUNIS system tabs to fully activate, to be fully activated in order to track the DBE spend overall, and one of the things that we're doing is we're making daily calls out of our office and working towards the completion of this goal. We talked about creating and streamlining a process to track the time a business comes, from the time a business comes into the Mercantile Office until that business starts to receive contracts and or P O requests, or and or are a part of P O requests in terms of being engaged with how we're spending our public dollars. Our office receives monthly data showing new business applications from the Mercantile and Tax Office. Emergency request spend is being communicated to our office as well when it, when it so happened to occur. As we know, we had to track the trailer incident sometime ago, about two months or so ago over on Paxton Street where a light pole was knocked down over on Seventeenth and Paxton. A purchase, or I'm sorry, emergency order such as that was communicated immediately, not only to my office, but of course through the proper channels. And so we're now in the loop in terms of how the spend is happening with that. So we also talked about building a more robust directory, which levels the playing field regarding the utilization of Co-Stars and other state-approved options, which do not necessarily consider, you know, M W D B status when you're honestly, and I say legally, avoiding the traditional bidding process. If you look at our February, March, February, March, our office has reached out to three hundred ninety-eight businesses of the two hundred, two thousand two hundred ninety-nine that are currently in the MUNIS system. And I just broke that down in terms of who we made contact with and so forth and so on, who actually said they were certified, and then a percentage that actually sent in their certifications to prove that they were certified. So we're tracking that as well, and then of course the January and March, our office continues to track the DBE spend the traditional way while building an ongoing DBE directory, and then our DBE numbers, which I'm going to talk, touch on when I close, from January, February, and March, as we saw, they were, you know, very low, and we had that discussion last time. But there is something that we've decided internally to have a discussion about that I'm going to bring forward here tonight with full transparency, so that we're all on the same page, and of course, continue to review weekly reports to identify M W D B E spend interdepartmentally. That's continuing to go well. Great help from Mister Brooks, Budget Manager, in terms of showing how to, we can extract data interdepartmentally. As part of, he's also part of the Mayor's Equity Roundtable or in Small Group Work Session, I should say. And Mister Steve Wortner out of I T has been a tremendous help as well. And first, finally, the need to fortify the relationship with Center for American Progress Gun Violence Prevention Division, Gun Violence Prevention overall, Center for American Progress, and Cities United. And basically, there's a follow-up meeting that's going to be ongoing. Captain Winder and Mister Angelo Craig actually had a meeting. We all sat down with Charlotte Plains from the Attorney General's Office, who's one of the foremost G V I experts, you know, throughout the state, as well as Mister Steve Bishop, who is with the Annie Casey Foundation, has lots of resources around the same area to continue to assist the city as we go into full implementation of the R G V I grant in terms of impacting the city. And part of that was, as we discussed, to make sure that although there's the police side and everything, how that's taken off, to make sure that there's equity in terms of how it's launched in the city, to ensure that individuals outside of law enforcement are in impact or involved with the G V I grant from the onset. And of course, these are the slides that stay the same, as, you know, I don't have a budget in my, my office. Special projects or grants, there's still two of us. And of course, the community engagement, the only thing that I highlight that has changed, that's not ongoing, has been, of course, we're still meeting in terms of the Pennsylvania statewide Black Developers Coalition and the Harrisburg, Hershey-Harrisburg D E I efforts that I talked about earlier being engaged in. So before I before I take questions, what I'd like to say is, one of the things that we talked about was, you know, our abysmal numbers in terms of the engagement. And what I found was, or we found as a team, having interdepartmental meetings, was that there's a lot of things that are in that monthly spend that we really can't control. For example, of the, I took one month, it was February, I took February, and we spent five million, one hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. And if you look at where we spent one million, seven hundred fifty-two dollars, eight hundred, eight dollars and eighteen cents, it was in tuition reimbursements, it was Medicare Part B, it was service contracts with Tyler Technologies, Verizon, Comcast, C R W, U G I, P P N L, employee travel and benefits, postage, Patriot News, advertisement, things like that, which are, there's no competition with the United States Post Office, for example. There's no real competition for P P N L, there's no real competition for U G I. And so that number of one point seven five, one million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred eight dollars and eighteen cents, if that is backed out from the five million, one hundred forty-two dollars, six hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cents, our numbers change. And what I mean by that is, that number from the five million number goes down to three million, three hundred eighty-nine dollars, eight hundred four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And at that point, instead of having a D B E percentage that particular month of somewhere in the neighborhood of five point three percent, we go to fourteen point eight percent. Now, that's still not the twenty percent, and it's still not good enough, but it surely isn't five point three. And so things like that is what I wanted to bring forward to let you know the type of conversation that's going on. It's not padding numbers in full transparency. It's like, we have no choice but to use the incinerator in that fee, in that, you know, whatever that case may, maybe it is what it is, or parking, if that's something that we, you know, are paying for in terms of garage parking, et cetera, like that. So that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you. I have a question. It's related to your goals, but it notes work that was done in February and March about the outreach to businesses. So three hundred ninety-eight businesses out of the two thousand, two hundred ninety-nine businesses that are in MUNIS, where is that larger number coming from? Is that the current M W D B E business, like database that the city already has, or what, where's that larger number?
There's just two thousand, two hundred ninety-nine, that? Ninety-nine thousand, two thousand, two hundred ninety-nine.
Yes.
That's the number, the total businesses that are actually in MUNIS now. Every business, every business.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then twenty-two identified as DBEs.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks for clarifying. I just wasn't sure where that larger number came from, but.
It's the total business, anybody that wrote this.
I know, but I was wondering if, because I know there was some discussion for a while that the directory, I guess that was online of M W D B Es was a little dated and wasn't very city-specific. It may have been more county-wide, so I was just curious maybe the status of that. Is that what you're referencing to update that directory, or are you looking to build a new one?
A combination of both. So we're, that one is being updated as we go, and because we're getting new businesses, you know, weekly, we'll say. We get a monthly report from Mike Hughes and Miss Janelle over there, and then we actually call those new businesses to see if they are actually DBE certified and or would like to self-certify, so this way we create some type of portal. So we encourage them to, you know, self-certify if they qualify, and then from there, we give them information relative to becoming DBE certified overall statewide.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. I will open the floor to my colleagues. I'll begin with Councilman Jones. Any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. How you doing, Mister Singleton?
All right, Councilman.
My question again is just simply, I see the spend here, and I see the efforts in trying to be more inclusive. Hopefully, that's local. I know some things you won't be able to compete with in that regard. However, a resolution, I think, would kind of help us, you know, target. Is there a reason why we don't have it, or is there something we can collaborate on, or are you just waiting?
Hands down. Collaboration is great. That's part of the Mayor's Equity Round, the Small Group Work Session. And so I was alluding to earlier, we're trying to come up with the framework, if you will, of policy, and of course, lay something in front of you all, as well as the Solicitors' Office and Mayor Williams to consider to actually move forward into legislation.
All right, so you have a timeline when you would begin this work, or would like to begin this?
So the eighteenth is our final small work session, our small work, Mayor's Equity Town, Mayor's Equity Roundtable Work Group, and at that point, we're planning to release what we've been working on.
Okay. Right now, you know, for me, that's something, I think that is very important, again, so we can do some more. Are we safe? Yeah, I think something like that would just help us identify more people that we can, I hate to use the word target, but you know, yeah, spread this thing around a little bit, but I don't have any further questions. Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No, my question was geared towards the three hundred and ninety-eight businesses that you had touched on. So thank you, Director Singleton, for being here, and just to echo the statements of Mister Jones, any help I could assist in, I'd definitely be more than willing to. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rose, any questions?
Thank you for being here tonight, Mister Singleton, and for your presentation. I don't know if I have any questions directly for you. It might be more towards the administration. Just still wondering if you're at any of the meetings that we're having for the different projects that we have out, since you are our Equity and Compliance Director, and you have, you're working on trying to make sure the businesses are included that have the N W B D E or D B certification. So just wondering still if you'd be part of those meetings, if you're not, but I'm guessing you still don't have a seat at the table.
To a certain extent.
Okay, so I don't know if there, I don't think any administration is here that'd be answering that.
I mean, we're, I'm not excluded, I don't believe, from, from any meetings, scheduling-wise. If you look at, you know, things are coming before you all. I mean.
No, they are. It's true, but are you there to before, to be able to speak on, hey, these are, here are some companies, or, you know, I don't know how the conversations go, because I'm not at the meetings, I'm not privy to that, because for some, some of them would be a conflict of interest, since we vote on things. I don't know if you're even allowed to be a part of the bid process. I don't, I don't know what you're allowed to do and are allowed to do, but.
One job description clearly defines being a part of.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right, so, yeah.
But I, you know, but I think I guess I have to maybe ask some I for administration, but thank you for the work that you are doing so far. Like you said, it's fifteen percent. It's not twenty yet, but it's better than the five percent, so I just look for, continue to look forward to, you know, more businesses, being able to participate in some of the projects happening in Harrisburg.
And remember, the twenty percent that the disparity study speaks about is the floor, not the ceiling.
Thank you.
I, I apologize. I was thinking about that twenty percent too. I forgot that. The question that I have for you, are you familiar with this language, with the, with the, the master format? You familiar with that language?
Help me out.
You're not?
No.
All right. I, I don't need to bring that out. I actually have a conversation with you, all right?
Okay.
All right. Apologize.
That's okay. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you for being here tonight, Mister Singleton.
Sure, thank you.
Also, thank you for taking a deeper dive into the numbers and kind of breaking out some of those uncontrolled spends that we really don't have that option to spend on, to really look at what our discretionary spending is, so we can really see the percentages a little better. I think that's really important, especially when we're trying to come up with some of this legislation. It helps us to understand what our numbers really are. I don't really have many questions. I guess just looking at our small businesses and our minority businesses in the city, are we having any educational work sessions or anything to inform them how they can learn about some of these bidding processes, or some of the contracts available, or even how does it declare themselves as a minority business and become certified?
So part of, part of education that I was educated on is language, you know, and I've been updated, so as opposed to, you know, us even in our work sessions talking about being a minority business, because we know overall we're not the minority, we're minoritized. And so when we start talking about diverse business, as disparity study speaks to, that leads us back to clearly doing more in terms of, for example, putting a disparity study on the website. Part of the recommendations, I know that's going to come back, is having more pre, pre-bid meeting opportunities to engage with the city, like doing, doing business with the city type of engagement sessions. And there's been suggestions about talking, about doing something, the promo on Channel Twenty, having that continuously running and or, and we got to go back again, remember, the bids are one thing, and we only do maybe on average three to five bids, but we spend money, you know, monthly, and so it's about the supplies, it's about, you know, professional services in spaces that we're in, other spaces we're in outside of just construction or the bidding process. You know, it's about, you know, supplier diversity overall.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to some of those doing business with the city sessions, because I think it's really important to make sure that people here know how to do business with the city and what all needs to be done, so.
And that's part of the discussion with the directors as well, you know, that we're having, that we're going to be having coming out of this, the small group work sessions.
Okay. Also, thinking those work sessions will learn more of what the businesses need in order to make it easier to do business with the city. You know, some of the small businesses complain about insurance requirements and different things, and kind of having that open conversation, I think, allows us to become better work partners as well, so, thank you.
One of the big things is payment. A lot of the businesses choose not to deal with the city to a certain degree, because they, they, they need, they need paid right away, not the forty-five days, not the thirty days, or whatever, you know, so there's something that maybe, that, you know, could be worked on as we move forward, that is an intentional barrier of timely pay, which is, we're, we're not breaking any rules or anything, but that is something that is an artificial barrier, we'll say, in terms of for some small businesses in their decision not to do business with the city. So not necessarily being excluded, it's a choice that they're saying, I can't wait to be paid.
Right. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, anything?
Thank you, President Bowers. Yes, I'd like to sentiment Vice President Green's comments, and also ask if someone is certified W B E through the city's application. Are they able to work outside of the city with those certifications, or are they confined to the city?
So we don't certify, so we're not a certifying body, that's be like statewide or national, EMS DC, et cetera. So it's like reverse engineer it. You'll be certified in a larger area than the city that allows you to work in the city as a certified entity. It's because we don't actually certify. The self-certification I spoke of is, you know, for example, you show up as, you know, black woman, business owner. At that point, if you choose to say that's who you are, that's what your business represents, you could self-certify as such. That doesn't necessarily mean you're certified overall. So if there's certain funds that are requiring, uh, actual DBE certification, you may, a federal funds most of times do. You may, you won't be qualified at the point for that through self-certification, but we have you in a pipeline now, which we can now walk you through the process, oftentimes free, um, in terms of we don't charge, but this, you know, we can lead you into, um, uh, resources that are free to help you get certified.
Thank you. And so how would some of the businesses in the city connect with you, uh, to be walked through that, that process?
So a lot of times when they come in to first register their business in the Mergantown Tax Office, that we have a great relationship, um, they send them right over or if they have questions such as, you know, DBE certification, et cetera. And even if they don't, if we see them, we mean in Mr. Collins and myself, we see them, we're going to the water fountain or something. We'll ask them, you know, stop over to our office if you're interested in, you know, uh, DBE certification, et cetera, veteran owned business, so forth and so on. So we have this conversation. We're, we're aggressive.
Okay, thank you.
We're engaging.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Singleton. That, those are all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Of any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution Twenty-One of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-One, twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Revise Software Systems for the purpose of redesigning, upgrading and hosting the website for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, uh, members of council. Uh, my name is Matt Maisel. I'm the Communications Director for the city. I'm joined by Procurement Manager Hillary Green and Deputy Director of Information Technology Nathan Grumbein. Uh, City Economic Development Director Jason Graves is also a member of our assembled team but was not able to be with us tonight. Um, we are joined virtually, uh, by Thomas Jean from Revise. We'll get him in here in, uh, just a minute. You do through here? Okay. Jared, I will leave that up to you. Okay. Okay. He says he was in the waiting room before, so. Okay. All right, I, I let him know. Um, in the meantime, uh, we did prepare a few remarks, uh, for council in regards to Resolution Twenty-One of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are very gracious that it is on the agenda for tonight's work session and the three of us and hopefully Mr. Jean, when he arrives, uh, we're able to answer any questions that you may have. HarrisburgPA.gov is the city's primary source of communication to the public. In the month of March, it was visited forty-five thousand times, of which there were sixty-one thousand page views. Our most visited pages include the parking enforcement page, careers and jobs page, Bureau of Codes page, trash and recycling and arts fest pages. Our conversations on seeking out the need to redesign HarrisburgPA.gov started in August of twenty twenty-three. The main issues we noticed with the current website were slow upload speeds, a disjointed and outdated menu design, ADA accessibility, which did not reach good standards, and an extremely unfriendly mobile interface. For your reference, website scores are considered good if it falls between an eighty to one hundred percent range. The ADA accessibility for HarrisburgPA.gov is fine at seventy-eight percent. However, its desktop speed is sixty-four percent. Mobile speed is twenty-five percent and other miscellaneous best practices like a website simplicity, navigation, responsiveness, convenience and user friendliness that should typically be in the ninety to one hundred percent range are at seventy-five percent. We do not employ a webmaster and since an overwhelming amount of website upkeep fell on to me and Nate Grumbein, plus it had been a few years since our last website design, we decided it best to start from scratch and bring HarrisburgPA.gov into a modern era with a focus on sleek design, accessibility and mobile priority. I requested twenty thousand dollars in the Communication Bureau's budget to go towards this project. Hillary Green was brought into the fold and put out a request for proposals in mid-January. Our RFP was open for one month and brought in thirty-two hits of interest from twenty-nine cities, fifteen states and Canada. Due to the high volume of interest, we determined we could narrow our focus by only moving forward with companies with experience building government sites. A brief sidebar, I need to correct a statement I made two weeks ago at my quarterly report. President Bowers asked me if we had looked at any Harrisburg-based companies. I said there was interest from Lower Paxton Township-based Mindburn Solutions as the only Harrisburg company to respond to our RFP. In going back and doing research for the presentation, I discovered that one other company, Notoria Marketing and Design Solutions is based in Harrisburg and did express interest in the project. However, they indicated that they had no experience with government websites and expressed an understanding why we chose not to move forward with them. That said, we hope to find a way to work with Notoria as a local company in the future. We were able to narrow our list from thirty-two down to fifteen potential clients, of which our group viewed one by one, reviewing their resumes and current website designs. We identified seven companies to move forward with in an interview stage and met virtually with each one. A handful of companies presented us with full proposals with quotes. Some came in over our twenty thousand dollar budget. Most met the budget exactly and revised a minority business enterprise, which we eventually were unanimous in selecting them as our top choice came in under budget. At this time, we can address any questions that council may have.
Thank you for clarifying and sharing that another Harrisburg-based company, uh, was interested in this opportunity. That's helpful. I think you also provided background of how you guys, um, decided that this was necessary. I did want to know, and I know you mentioned, um, during your quarterly report, that Revise is based in Troy, Michigan. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay. The, the proposed fee is nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars with a six thousand, four hundred dollar annual support and hosting fee. Well, we have, I know we, you mentioned we don't have a webmaster employed, but with the, um, I guess the support and hosting fee, would we have any accessibility to assist with that or is that completely, um, offered by Revise?
So, um, Revise does offer technical support. Once the website would go live, it would still fall on the people of City Harrisburg, the employees to maintain the website. One of our goals and requests in this is that we have a more templated, templated approach to building the website because right now we're in WordPress. Things can go awry. People can make it look any way they want. Um, so they have the ability to create a template that will standardize how everything looks on the site to make it easier for people to maintain on their own. Um, the, I, the goal here was also to find a simple, we call it CMS, content management system in the background that we can train other people in each division so that they can come in and update their own sections.
Okay.
The security is there in place that they can only get to the pages that they should be getting to. And the, that was one of the main goals that I was brought in to keep an eye on when we were looking at solutions was security, maintainability and everything. Um, Revise offered a very strong solution there and yes, um, the six thousand, I forget the exact figure there.
Six thousand, four hundred.
Um, um, we do have, IT does have budget, um, yearly for maintaining the current website as it is. So that falls within our annual budget as well to move forward with that support. So, um, they would be there technically to help us with the hosting and everything that way. And I do believe that they do offer some support services if we are having issues like adding a new page and that type of stuff as well.
Okay. And anybody can access that support?
Um, I'm not.
Or would it just be funneled through IT?
Uh, it would be funneled, um, whoever's going to be the administrator on that. So I'm not sure exactly. We didn't necessarily, but if it does come down to that, IT could take on that onus of saying, hey, this needs to go out to revise or Matt could take on that. We could have those two points of contact to say, hey, this needs to go to revise and we can open that support ticket with them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my other question was just timeline. I see in the RFP, I think the intended deadline is September of two thousand and twenty-four. Is that correct?
We initially put September of two thousand and twenty-four because, and Hillary can address this because she filled out the RFP. I believe we needed to put something in there, but we are not. Yeah, so I actually have, uh, Thomas Jean from Revise on speakerphone with us, uh, now. Um, he can speak more to the timeline of the project that he's going to be working on. Uh, we were looking for some point in the fourth quarter of the year loosely.
Okay.
We would. Okay, got it. Okay.
If Ms. Green is going to speak to it?
Yeah, sure. I, I have, uh, I have Thomas, I have Thomas Jean, uh, from Revise with us right now. Thomas, can you, uh, hear us? You're on speakerphone in Harrisburg City Council.
I can hear you. Can you all hear me?
No.
But try, try one more time.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, President Bowers, can you, uh, repeat the question to Mr. Jean about, uh, the timeline?
Yes, my question was related to the timeline. I noted in the RFP that the intended deadline was September of two thousand and twenty-four. So I just wanted to know if that was accurate or if, um, that something has changed on your end.
Yes, uh, um, that is still possible. There are a few things that are, um, really up to you all on how quickly we move through the project. Um, there's a few phases where we need your approval, like the design, um, things like that. So September is still possible. I would give it about a fifty percent chance. If it's, if it's an absolute requirement that we do it, it can definitely happen, but certainly fourth quarter of this year is, um, very reasonable. And I would expect most of our projects starting this month or next month will easily be, be live before then. So.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I'll open the floor, uh, to my colleagues who may have some additional questions for either Mr. Jean or the panel. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
So this is just web designing service basically and some, and hosting. Um, will we as, if they're doing some of the changes and they are doing the hosting, will our staff be able to also kind of co-update?
Yes, so the whole premise of this, uh, the RFP was that they deliver a website to us that we would be able to maintain as well. So they're going to be doing the upfront lift of design, coding, um, which we don't have a full staff to be able to handle that. Um, my, my plate is completely full. Yes, I used to do that in the past, but that, it's outside the realm of what we have the availability to do in IT. Nor do we have the design expertise in-house to be able to do everything that Revise can do for us. But the maintaining of it, yes, it'll be a web CMS kind of like we have WordPress now. This will be another way that we can log in. It won't be WordPress, but that we can still get in and maintain that content and make up-to-the-minute updates as we need. We're not going to be reliant on them to make any of the updates necessarily to the content in the future. Um, it will just be them doing the work of converting what we already have into a good format and cleaning it up to make it more presentable to the public.
And just, this is just also clarification. So at this price point, they're not responsible for kind of security issues and breaches, right? Where's, our department, IT is kind of responsible.
Well, so that's a good question. Um, we will have what we can in place to protect it, but they will ultimately be hosting the website. So the platform is based off the security of theirs. I've assessed what they've given us against everything and the security standards meet what we would be able to do here in the city. So I have no doubts that the site will be secure, safe and resilient to attacks. Um, we will still keep the security in place that we have in front of the website known as CloudFlare. That's a web proxy that helps block, um, malicious attacks before they would even get an attempt to attack the website before it would get to the host themselves. So.
And then this is just for, again, for personal edification. Do you mind going back and reminding us, who was the company that designed this one and how much did that cost?
Um, I don't have the figures. Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I don't remember. Sorry.
Um, the company was Gavin. They are based out of the Lancaster area. Um, I don't have the figures on how much we spent on that because that was before my time. I would have to go back and find that information out. Uh, I believe that website was done in two thousand or two thousand and one. Or twenty, twenty, twenty or twenty twenty-one.
Find them the calendar.
Oh, sorry. Twenty, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So it has been quite a few years since it's been refreshed.
Okay. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, the one question that I had was asked and answered already. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls.
Uh, thank you, President Bowers. Thank you for being here tonight. Just a, just a little bit more clarity on the clarity on the security piece. Um, as you said, um, re, sorry, I'm going to say it wrong and I don't want to. And it's in front of me. And I just couldn't, um, RIEZ is called? Revise, I'm sorry. Like, went away. They will handle the security upfront for how long until we have to then?
They, we will be paying them for hosting. So as long as they are our web hosts, they will also be responsible for the security, the backup and all that of the website.
Right. So I guess I'm asking, so I didn't see it in here and I'm sorry if I missed it. How long will we be paying them for that?
Um, as of right now, I'm not sure. It, it goes year to year. So, um, with the, with the hosting and support. So that would be a yearly cost on top of what we're doing. Right now it's committed for a year, I believe.
With the twenty thousand, that's, we get a yearly commit of per, security web protection and then it would be revisited next year? I'm just seeing how the, how the fees would go as the years.
Sure. Uh, I'm, I'm going to bring Mr. Jean in to, uh, answer that question in terms of, uh, what Revise would be, uh, ultimately responsible for. Uh, Councilwoman Rawls, could you please repeat the question to Mr. Jean?
Yes, and Jean, I'm sorry about mispronouncing the name of your company. Um, but I was wondering, Revise for, I'm guessing the first year, part of the twenty thousand is going to cover security for the Harrisburg website. But then after that, um, what would the cost be for an upkeep of security?
Sure, yeah, great question. So we, um, in our, so we have a sales agreement, of course, that, um, you may not, may not have seen, but, um, up to four years yearly, we are, um, we would host it, maintain it, secure it for a cost of six thousand, four hundred dollars per year. Um, that'll remain flat each year. It won't go up. You can also opt out, um, yearly. So you're not stuck with us for four years if, if you don't like us or anything like that. Um, so yeah, it'd be for at least four years we would commit to you. Uh, we hope you commit to us for that long as well, but you don't have to upfront. So it's kind of, you get to have your cake and eat it too, as I said. Um, also, if you do happen to be with us through the fourth year, we do redesign the site for free in that fourth year or thereafter. Um, so you'll be, you know, refreshed at that point. And then from there, you get to decide if you want to continue with us or go year to year at that point. So, um, generally, most of our clients stick around for a long time once they're in the family, as we say.
Yeah, you did get, you do have your cake and eat it with that. No, that, thank you very much. You answered my question.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, Jean. Um, Communications Team, IT Team, thank you for joining us. Um, I guess I will, uh, ask Jean a few, a pair of questions first. Um, Jean, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Awesome. Um, with the web, uh, hosting, does that include our URL fees, our search engine optimization fees and emails integrated as well?
It does not include the emails. Um, you'll, you'll continue to pay, pay whoever you're paying for those, um, separately. Um, search engine optimization, we do some of that, uh, automatically and then also allow you to edit it. Um, so the city staff will be able to make changes. Um, so the city staff will be able to make changes to the search engine optimization. Um, but I'm not sure exactly what you're currently doing. So it's going to depend on what you're currently doing, whether we can replicate that or not. The good news with city websites is that you're not typically compete, competing with, you know, hundreds of other, uh, city of Harrisburgs across the country. So generally, you're, you're still going to be on the first page of, uh, of Google, honestly, regardless of your website vendor. But we, we do have a few, uh, methods and tricks behind the scenes that, that make it better, for sure.
That was more, um, speaking geared towards programming and initiatives, which do get replicated. So if someone wanted a specific, like, city initiative and not just like random, would they be able to input that and maybe say Allison Hill? They'd be able to know all the programming on Allison Hill or South Side, et cetera, through the city, not just, of course, there'll only be one HarrisburgPA.gov, but I meant just the things that go with the website. Search engine optimization would really help locate that immediately for the people that are looking on the search engine. Um, would emails, I guess this would be to, uh, Matt? Or whomever, would emails be something down the line we'd be looking to integrate? Or would we still host the emails, um, in-house?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what you mean by that. So we ho, uh, the email for the city of Harrisburg is handled through, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five. So that is completely separate of any website.
Yep, yep, yep.
If you're looking to do like web email forms on the website, that's a communication form with the website. If you're talking about the actual postings, use of the email, that's all handled by IT. They would have nothing to do with that.
Yep, so when you go to the URL, because we're keeping the same URL, I'm guessing, correct?
Yes.
Typically, when you get a web hosting, that would come with a set of maybe emails, et cetera. So we'll keep it internal and still, they'll be in charge of the .gov? Is that, we'll, we'll still pay them for the .gov?
We still have the full ownership of the URL.
Yep.
HarrisburgPA.gov. We will be directing the web traffic to go to their server and host from there. All the email and all the other services that we have done as of now will remain the same and nothing will change.
So it's really kind of just designed for the most part with a little upkeep, for the most part?
It, it's the hosting of the actual webpages themselves that they will be managing. Everything else, just like right now, we pay Gavin a hosting fee, and they host the WordPress website.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll be taking that off of Gavin's plate, moving that to Revise, and they will be doing the hosting.
Right.
Uh, everything else stays the same as.
I only ask because traditionally with web hosting comes emails, server emails, et cetera.
And that's, that's at a lower business level. When you get to the enterprise level, all of that is always separated.
It's separate.
And you don't get email with hosting and that at the enterprise level.
Okay, okay. But it would still have to channel through the .gov URL, correct?
Yeah, nothing will change with that because we are in control of the HarrisburgPA.gov.
Okay, so then we wouldn't have to worry about email transition. So then, um, who would design, who would approve that final design? Um, Mr. Jean had alluded to, once the design gets approved, who will make that approval?
That, that'll be us as a group. So, uh, the three of us plus, uh, Jason Graves, who also has experience with, uh, website design. Uh, Nate here has experience with, uh, website design. Um, the four of us have been working on this from the start. Uh, we think we have a nice, uh, team here. Um, so what we will do is, we will make this as collaborative as possible, but, uh, the four of us will ultimately decide with the help of, uh, uh, Mr. Thomas Jean here from Revise that, uh, what the ultimate design will look like.
Okay. I just think because, just my idea, just thinking out loud, with knowing how full some of our plates are already, it may be a great idea to have them, like, solely host? Is that ever in consideration? Or, um, you would have to keep in charge of, like, because of the government emails, you would have to keep in charge of majority of it?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what you mean.
So typically, it seems like they'll be hosting, but we'll still be holding on to a lot of the responsibilities? Is it, was it ever being considered, like, to allow?
We won't ever be outsourcing any of the email or anything like that because of the close coupling to all of our security that that's all intertwined with.
Okay.
Um, we wouldn't want to put that onus on a third-party company.
And things like that.
Yeah, right. Because it's all tied to our integrated security on all of our servers.
Yep.
So that's something that has to stay internal.
Yep, it has to be sacred, absolutely. And, and then Matt, um, Director Mazel, how would this make the website more efficient for public officials or directors to upload maybe their events or what they have going on? Or how can they easily get that over to who would be doing that?
Sure, so I think the main thing that we're going to see here, once a website is designed or redesigned, is the simplicity of navigating the website. That's the primary reason. If you go through HarrisburgPA.gov now, sometimes it could take you three, four clicks to get to where you want to go. And even then, you've got four different Parks and Recreation pages. We've got hundreds of broken links on the website. There's a lot of cleanup. And that's ultimately one of the impetus is why we're doing this in the first place is because we do not have the time or the energy to go through every single bit and clean this up. Uh, what we'll see when this is all said and done is an easy-to-navigate, clean website, uh, that people can go to, uh, that, that highlights the city of Harrisburg and not just its beauty, but also a lot of great things that we are doing within the city. And not trying to make it look like a government website because a lot of people, a lot of times, like the current website, you get hung up on bureaucracy, especially with the way that it's sorted. People want to, you, as I mentioned in, in the report here, we know the main pages that people go to more than anything else. Those typically don't change. How can we make this, how can we make those, uh, webpages stand out more and make it easier for people to get to so that they don't have to go clicking through multiple pages just to get to where they want to go?
My apologies. That would be for the, like, everyday viewer logging on. I meant more from a perspective of an elected official, let's say Parks and Rec has something going on. How easy will it be for maybe Councilwoman Rawls to get maybe the information for her upcoming event, upload it into the right space? So she, instead of saying, hey, follow me on Facebook, go to the webpage or the council's webpage, and everything will be there.
Do you, do you mean how easy will it be for someone?
That's a director.
Like Councilwoman Rawls to go in and post herself, or?
Either that or to get the information to the one posting.
Okay, that, well, getting the information to someone who's posting is, will be no different than what it currently is. Um, which is, you know, get the information to me or get the information to someone in IT. We post it, bing bang boom, it's, it's done. Uh, Revise will be offering training sessions for, you know, the new website. Just basically, here is how to click around, here's how to post. Um, modern updates to what we are currently used to. The posting aspect of this, uh, won't be, uh, complicated. Once it is online, though, it'll be a lot easier for people to find.
Awesome. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Uh, just real quick, man. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking, always looking at the numbers. And just like my colleagues, you know, I'm a little worried about that sixty-four hundred, uh, price tag. So one of the questions I have, um, why is it four years that we have to do that amount of time it takes for people to, whoever's going to take over that responsibility to get acclimated with your system?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question one more? Okay.
Um, we are not tied to four years. Um, we have that price lock for hosting and support on the platform for four years. Um, it's, yeah, sixty-four hundred dollars a year. But when you look at in terms of hosting and all that, um, at a high level, this is a reasonable rate of hosting. Um, we could potentially look to bring that internal, but that is then opening up our internal networks to attacks.
Got you. I got you.
And it's opening a hole for cybersecurity attacks into the city infrastructure. So have it hosted in the cloud, like they're going to be hosting, offsets some of that security cost that's going to, and onus on us so that we can keep ourselves safer. So that's one of the nice reasons for having another hosting provider for the website itself, instead of us taking it on. Because in the end, that sixty-four hundred dollars is a small price to pay compared to all the additional software, monitoring, and everything that we're going to have to do to make sure that we are not getting attacked internally.
Got you. Um, thank you for that explanation. And the other thing is, uh, I will say that the websites are very user-friendly. I took my time. I looked around, uh, got on the one that you guys did out in California. Um, it is very user-friendly, and I think I was worried about that price tag. And I said, oh, wait a minute, this is, this is cool. I, I like the work. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing and hearing none, thank you very much. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. We will now move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will defer to our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Chair Daniels.
Thank you. So it looks like we have a report from the Bureau of Planning. Um, Mr. Knight, if you don't mind coming up. And I understand you're just coming, returning from a break. So feel free to keep it short and just up, give us updates of, or anything that has deviated from the last report that you provided. Uh, unless other council members have specifically worked on you, with you on an issue that they wanted you to report on.
Sure. Um, no, I just tried to provide a, uh, brief update, uh, from the, uh, earlier report, the fourth quarter. Twenty-three report. Yeah, this is. Okay. There we go. Um, so this is generally the same first slide from the earlier, um, uh, presentation. Uh, the only addition is, um, a notation that we generally work with the City Engineers Office pretty closely on transportation-related projects. For example, uh, I was in this morning with, um, uh, Mr. Griffin, uh, and our, uh, representative from Als Montgomery on the Market Street Bridge project at the PennDOT headquarters. So I wanted to make sure I added that in to kind of give some depth to what the department does. Um, as far as the quarterly summary, uh, the first, uh, quarter's been, um, definitely big, uh, busier than, um, the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-three. And I think generally busier than, uh, uh, our, um, quarters overall, probably in large part due to staffing shortages, which, uh, you know, kind of hurts the capacity. But we also seem to have just gotten a large amount of, um, permits and inquiries coming into the, uh, department, which kind of portends, I think, um, more projects coming through throughout the year. We usually kind of see that uptick ahead of time as people determine, you know, what they're going to be doing for the year as far as developments or, you know, historic review projects. Um, so, you know, our additional projects are pretty much the same, comprehensive plan updates, uh, updating bureau applications, uh, just finished, uh, some coordination with the Codes Bureau to, uh, update some of the documents so that we can reduce the overall number of documents, uh, and also streamline the review process and make sure that, um, prospective property owners are getting more accurate information upfront, uh, on, um, the, uh, properties they are purchasing so that we don't run into issues where, um, they did not get correct information and it kind of, you know, throws a wrench into whatever their reuse or redevelopment plans are. Um, the CRS, uh, uh, research is kind of an ongoing project for us, uh, that our Urban Planner One, um, is kind of our point person on. And then, uh, coordinating with IT and various departments like Codes, um, with the Munis, uh, platform launch. And again, that kind of speaks to the coordination we had a little bit, uh, with the Codes Bureau on those documents because I believe they're going to be going up maybe in May. Um, so we're trying to get out ahead of that. Uh, goals for the first quarter were largely, um, the same as, uh, what was the final quarter of twenty-twenty-three. Um, filling the vacant positions, uh, we had a, an interview for the Historic Preservation Specialist last week. Um, and, uh, so we're expecting to make a decision on that by the end of this week. Um, and, uh, hoping to schedule a interview for a qualified candidate we got for the Deputy Planning Director position. Uh, still waiting to hear back from that. Um, the comprehensive plan documentation, uh, again, distributing that to other departments, uh, and then working on the story maps for the, the website. Um, the zoning amendment packages, uh, I think I kind of briefly touched on that in the fourth quarter, uh, discussion, where we're looking at, um, you know, the documents now, probably fifteen years since it's been developed at the end of the, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand ten. Uh, so, you know, while it's, I think, served us fairly well, I think there's definitely some things we can change based on, uh, the projects that have come in and kind of the way, uh, maybe, uh, the world's changed here a little bit in the, um, in the intervening years. Uh, and we'll be bringing those before the City Council, um, CRS documentation again, uh, and then application documentation. And again, that's an ongoing thing. I think we're making some, uh, pretty good progress. I'd like to move a little bit faster, but, uh, again, our capacity issues are a little bit of a, um, hindrance to that. Uh, the real big, uh, update here, um, was for the budget spend. I wanted to give you guys, uh, pardon me, some, uh, firm numbers on what that looks like. Um, so again, our, uh, budget is primarily staffing, uh, and then the, um, zoning hearing board meetings. That constitutes, you know, almost ninety percent of our budget. Uh, and then you kind of have a breakdown for the three core components of the, uh, zoning hearing board, uh, meetings, uh, which are our legal advertisements, our stenographer, and our solicitor. Uh, so I think, uh, those numbers kind of speak to the fact that our reviews, uh, while they haven't necessarily, we haven't necessarily been, having a low volume of them, have been fairly short. Um, so that's kind of kept the, uh, costs down, um, on, on some of those things. Uh, this is, um, again, mostly a recitation from the, uh, fourth quarter twenty-twenty-three presentation about what we're looking to do. Uh, and, you know, while there has been some, um, again, capacity issues, I think we are moving forward on all of these fronts, um, just not quite as fast as I'd like. Uh, and then this is kind of, um, an update on, uh, those two outstanding vacancies, uh, that I just noted previously. Uh, again, this slide, uh, with regard to community engagement, um, is largely a recitation from the fourth quarter. Um, you know, we have seen, uh, some, um, movement and progress in the permitting and getting, uh, sorry, the applications and, uh, the getting new documentation online, um, ongoing, uh, project. And, uh, hopefully, here by the end of April, we'll have all new versions of the application documents up. We won't have the Spanish version, language versions up, but, um, hopefully, we'll have these new, um, updated applications available for the public. And that's all we have.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Knight?
Let's have one. Um, with your, uh, community outreach and engagements, this is the only way that you're going to reach out to the community, to be a website?
Um, I mean, right now, we have two people in the department, uh, so we aren't able to necessarily get out into the community. I'm hoping if we're able to fill both of those positions. I know back when we had, um, uh, our previous Historic Preservation Specialist, uh, Historic Preservation Specialist, he was out at like HHA meetings, um, to, uh, answer any questions that people who reside in historic districts may have. Um, and I was able to be freed up for things like going down to Shypoke to have discussions with, um, property owners down there about our floodplain program. Uh, so really, um, I think this is the primary way we'll be in, increasing our engagement. Um, and, you know, I think it's not just updating the documents, but it's about the information we put in them as well. Um, because a lot of the follow-up questions we get, even for people within the zoning relief or, um, land development process, um, are something that's kind of in our applications now or in the zoning code, but it's not maybe necessarily clear, it's not right in front of them, it's not, um, compiled into a single place. So we're hoping that by doing that, people will have more information upfront to have those answers that, you know, they might otherwise be reaching out to us for or, you know, waiting on responses for.
All right, so i- if you have those positions filled, um, can you just share with us what that would look like, with that outreach, other than what you just explained?
Um, well, like I said, I think it would probably be, um, initially reaching out to organizations, um, to, um, work with whoever their attendees are or their membership groups are on, on things like historic preservation, um, uh, trainings or, um, Q and A sessions. Uh, that's, that's a big one, um, because we do have a lot of, uh, property turnover. And so people coming into the city may not be aware of what their, um, responsibilities are as far as that's concerned. Um, we'd like, as a big part of the, uh, floodplain, uh, the CRS documentation is putting together a plan for public information. Uh, and what that is based on is really kind of going out to individual communities, especially those that are within floodplains, to say, you know, here's what's going to happen during a flood event in your neighborhood, or if you're in the Cameron Street corridor, in this corridor. Um, here's how we are going to let you know, here's when we're going to let you know. We'll get, you know, a notice of the river cresting five hours before it'll happen. So you'll get a, um, you know, an email, or maybe we'll have like a phone tree or something like that. Um, and then what the next steps are to make sure that during that flood event, uh, you're, first of all, saving, you know, lives, uh, making sure that people aren't wandering into someplace with, um, you know, uh, downed power lines or something like that. Um, but also making sure we're, you know, preserving property and possessions to the most, to the greatest extent. So, um, you know, that might involve, okay, once you get a call, uh, your first step is to go down and shut off the power. Your next step is to bring everything up to your second floor. So worst-case scenario, your first floor gets flooded. At least, you know, most of the stuff, most of your valuables are out of that harm's way. So, you know, I think the direction that that engagement goes in could, um, go in a lot of directions uh, based on exactly what you're discussing and, um, you know, kind of what areas, uh, of the city you're discussing, both geographically and topically.
Thank you. I think that's important, uh, to make sure that, you know, we're informing, you know, the residents. and the people that's in those areas, what to do, how to do it, all those things. So I just wanted to know that, other than this way versus the two bodies you're down, right?
Yep.
All right. So hopefully you can get those positions filled. But thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Thank you. Um, next, we're going to see Resolution 25 hyphen 2024. Mr. Trues, do you mind reading it into the record?
Resolution 25, 2024, a resolution approving the preliminary final land development plan for 1610 North Fourth Street, submitted by Midtown Redevelopment LLC to consolidate 19 vacant parcels and construct a four-story, 36-unit senior apartment building with first-floor commercial space along with associated improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Knight, if you don't mind giving us a brief history of the process and then we'll have the applicants elaborate on their application.
Sure. So this lot consolidation and land development plan is again for 1610 North Fourth Street, which is really just a project site comprised of 19 vacant lots and some small public rights away like paper streets running in between these. And there is a concurrent street vacation application process or application that has been filed and will need to go through a public hearing before City Council here. But there's no time limit on that as opposed to this application. So that's why this is being heard first. As noted, the project is going to be a four-story building, kind of in an L-shaped along both, I believe, with frontages on both Clinton Street and North Fourth Street. The frontage along North Fourth Street will feature, I think it's, I don't know that it's been reserved for any particular business. It's kind of commercial space slash potentially community space, depending on what the applicants end up doing with the space. And then there's an access to a first-floor garage off of Clinton Street. The project also has another associated accessory parking lot just to the west bounding this project site that's accessible directly from Logan Street. And above that, there will be the 36 senior apartments on site. And so as part of this process, the applicants also needed to secure zoning relief for things like setback encroachment and the proposed use. And the applicants did receive that in late 2022. So the applicants have their zoning relief in hand. And now, again, they're bringing both the street vacation process and the, or street vacation application and the lot consolidation and land development plan application before City Council here. As far as the resolution from the Harrisburg Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended by a unanimous vote that City Council approve the request with the following conditions: the applicant providing a formal photometric plan to confirm consistency with the environmental performance standards in 7331 of the zoning code. The applicant is install, will install a varied facade treatment similar to that submitted with the current application document. So the initial rendering of the project was a little bit kind of plain and being that it's a, you know, larger building within the context of this block and kind of this street. We wanted to make sure that the building as best as possible blended in with the kind of row home streetscape of the blocks to the north and south here. So the design that the applicants have does do that. It kind of does a little bit of a, I think, Ephesus and brick alternating pattern. So it kind of has the appearance of row homes, just a story taller than the surrounding properties. Parking lot curb cuts are going to feature driveway access points as opposed to street cuts. And that just means that the access points are brought up to the level of the sidewalk. So it slows vehicles as they go in and out, ensuring again, better pedestrian safety. The applicants will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the size and location of the refuse collection on site and update the billing accounts. Obviously, with a new development of vacant land, we want to make sure that the, the refuse containers can handle the load and that the city's DPW trash trucks can access the trash containers, whatever they may be. So we just always encourage applicants to work directly with the DPW to make sure that that's done to their standards. The applicant will coordinate with the city arborist on the species of trees and installation of appropriately sized and located tree pits. And they are proposing sidewalk tree pits along North Fourth Street. The applicant, the Plan Bureau recommends the applicant consider incorporating community benefits on the properties to which the access walkway will run onto Harris Street. So there's a small bit of, there's two narrow lots at the southern end of this project site that go through from the center of the block to Harris Street and has a little proposed walkway. And we just want to make sure that's filled with something other than just a grassy lawn so that, again, there are benefits to the public, whether that's stormwater management or, you know, pollinator plants or something like that. And then finally, the applicant will receive City Council approval of the associated street vacation request. The Planning Commission recommends by unanimous vote that the City Council approve the request for the following reasons. The applicant has received approval from the zoning hearing board for the various zoning relief requests needed to effectuate the project as proposed and has concurrently submitted the street vacation application necessary to consolidate the lots. Approval of the proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which features other mixed-use and medium-density apartments and will bring benefits by developing long vacant lots, meeting pedestrian, bicyclist and driver needs by installing and improving sidewalks, incorporating bike storage and providing sufficient off-street parking for residents. The project, the proposed project will provide much-needed senior housing units for the community while also increasing the customer base for local businesses and providing space for new small businesses. The proposed project will have a minimal impact on the existing off-street parking supply, given that one off-street parking space will be provided for each proposed unit with available guest spaces on site as well. And finally, the proposal will add new units to the neighborhood and activate the street and surrounding community on nights and weekends and contribute to a growing customer base to support local businesses.
Thank you. And from the lobby, are there any time sensibilities related to this ordinance?
Do this land development?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, I don't have the exact date.
Okay.
I've got to check. As of right now, I believe it's.
Do you know that, do you know that they'd certain Jeff?
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I think he's right. I want to say like May 18th or something like that, that range.
So there is, there is a date. It's just that this one tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. So if the applicants could please introduce yourselves and give us a sense of the project that you're trying to work on.
Yeah, good evening. Matthew Fisher with RJ Fish and Associates here, representing the design engineer for the project. I thought Mr. Knight gave a pretty thorough overview of everything regarding the parking breakdown. Twelve of the parking spaces are going to be kind of a surface lot outside of the building. First floor, first level parking under the building will be about 30 spaces. There are a number of unopened, unimproved alley rightaways going through the project. We have submitted the paperwork to vacate those rightaways. Matt Long has held two community outreach meetings on that too with the neighbors as well. So he can speak a little more to the tenants of that and came up to that. We're in receipt of the comments from both the city, CRW and the Conservation District. We don't have any issues complying with any of the comments and conditions placed by the Planning Commission. With that, I'd open the council for any questions. And if Matt wants that, I think that too.
Yep. Just noting, again, this is a 36-unit senior living. This has the parking on the first floor primarily, with the surface parking lot, as Matt said. And I defer to any questions.
And then this is just for, to help me visually, of the 19 lots, it looks like a lot of the area is cleared out. Of the 19 lots, how many of them have structures on them or do any of them have structures?
None.
Okay, so it is that, okay, okay. And that's it for me. I'll open up to council, I'll start to the far left, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I have a couple of questions. When you talk about the senior living, what type of amenities, what type of festivities will be provided for them? In that area, it's very limited things for them to do. So when we look at, we're thinking about our seniors. We don't want them to just be in a nice place, but we want them to be able to do something as well. So what do you have?
Yep, absolutely. So this project is actually part of a four-part project. A few of the council members were here. We had phase one about a year and a half, two years ago. That incorporates a community center on the first floor. And then this one will have retail commercial spaces fronting along Fourth Street. Inside the building itself, there'll be the community space on each floor. There'll be makeshift, not makeshift gym. It'll be, it's not, I don't want to call it a full gym, but it's going to be a gym for the tenants. This is going to be, you know, active senior living. This isn't going to be assisted or anything that way. But additionally, with the next two phases that are coming down the line here, they encompass a lot of the area around there and there'll be several amenities being added with commercial retail spaces and everything to kind of help this project as well.
All right. And then one of the other things, I see you guys checked a lot of the boxes. Maybe I missed something? You checked a lot of, everybody checked off and said every, everything, all this is a go. One of the things I didn't hear though, community approval. You guys have reached out in that community in that area to see if this is something, you know?
So since the beginning of this proposal started in 2021, early 2021, specifically on this building, we've had eight, so we had two meetings in reference to the street vacations, the paper alleys that go on here. But addition to that, we had six other community outreach sessions that touched on this building and the project, the larger project as a whole. And also, I believe it was the, sometime in 2020, I believe, presented to City Council here. We had a breakdown of each phase that included this, went through it. We tried to reach out to, you know, any of the nonprofits in the area and just had several community outreach sessions.
Okay. So they, how were they? I mean, they felt that this is something that?
Yep. And these have gone on. We've had public comment at all the Planning Commission hearings, the zoning hearings and everything that way as well as.
Okay. My other question would be, when you say there will be a limited effect on the parking, you know, this is a huge issue in the city of Harrisburg. So what limited effect do you think that this will have in that area?
Well, we figured with, we have more parking than there are apartments there. And with this being senior living, we're not expecting every person to have two vehicles. The breakdown of the apartments is one and two bedrooms.
What I mean specifically is for the residents around this project.
So if you look at Fourth Street now, there, this is all vacant land. There's no parking on that side. If you go down, you'll see a few until you get farther down Fourth Street. So any, I don't think it's going to have a large effect on the parking in that area because there is nothing in that area. It's widely vacant.
Okay. Last question. I hear a lot of retail space and commercial, things of that nature. Have you reached out and, or do you plan to reach out into this community? Would this project create any jobs in this community? Would any local vendors be utilized in the construction process?
Absolutely. So as I gave about two years ago when I presented to council, we always reach out to the city first that were based in the city. The builder is based in the city. The developer is based in the city as well. We always reach out and have several pre-bid conferences. We don't just do the, you know, the general template of, okay, we posted it on a board. We try to have as many community outreach sessions on the bidding process as well.
So you have a list of local vendors or something like that? All right. I would love to see, take a look at that if you can, share that with me. I would love to see that. I think my council members would also love to see that. Thank you.
On that, I'd like to note, when we met in 2020 and presented, I actually bought some of the contractors that were city-based with to discuss their involvement on prior projects and of course, they'd be involved in these.
I appreciate you doing that. A lot of people are building in this community and there's some jobs needed around here. So we would love to help our community share in the growth of the city. So I'd love to see what you have. I appreciate you. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I just have to echo this very sentiment from Councilman Jones, being MBE, WBE specific. Or is that included in the list that you were given? Is that a list that you might need again, updated?
We have and we continually update as much as possible. One of the things we addressed before is the builder component of this has always exceeded 20% at least minority participation on any of these projects. I don't think we're ever going to get under that threshold. And then again, when we had met in '22 to present all four phases, you know, the members that we bought with, the contractors that we use often are, you know, the ones we had, we had city-based. We had minority contractors with, and we always reach out to them first. There's been several projects that we've had, certain phases of projects that we've took on on other developments where we've met or exceeded. We had one phase of a project on Six and McQuay where we exceeded 90% city-based employment on that phase.
Awesome. Awesome. If there ever is a need, feel free to contact Director Singleton, our DEI department. He can get you an updated list if need be. Then also, I don't mean to sound like a broken record. I know you had mentioned community outreach and approval. And when the question was asked as far as their reception, you have kind of alluded back to the hearings that take place in this building. But I guess, and he had stepped out for a minute, but I always like to be very specific. At those events or at those community-driven events, what was the participation like? Was there comments made by the public at those specific events? Or was it like five or six people just like, hey, we need this?
So to give a kind of breakdown, in '21 and '22 and even into '23, we had met with friends in Midtown and MAC. Those are the two local that have the jurisdiction of there. And hosted events with them, tail end of COVID, we did virtual events. We had public pop-up sessions where we actually went out to every location that we were proposing to build, had the boards out, put the tent up, welcome to anyone. We had visitors sign in. I know at one of those events, we had well over 100 signatures. We've kind of submitted those throughout the process. We've had presentations at Historic Harrisburg. We tried to check any box and get as much involvement and every one of them is a Q and A. And we typically print out packets that they can take with them. We've had several people before, you know, they take the packet and they'll email, they'll ask their questions, we'll respond. And, you know, sometimes we've had some that will come, we've had a few that have come to every single meeting and it's been a continual dialogue. And as Jeff would attest to, you know, there's been back and forth with the community. We've altered the appearance of the buildings. We've, other buildings, not this building in particular, but we've cut down, you know, height restrictions and stuff to bring them down.
So there's definitely been some back and forth, a little wiggle room, move it here, change it there. That's what I was looking for, that the community itself actually has insight, actually has a little bit of say-so. And you guys, I mean, communications, there's a little bit of feedback on my mic if you have an opportunity to adjust. Thank you. But just your ability to be transparent and just really flow about the conversation, I really appreciate it. So no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rawls.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Daniels. And thank you for being here tonight. Sorry if it wasn't too close enough for me. Well, one, thank you for your participation with the MBE and WB enterprises. Before the question was asked, I did see that you said you liked to have at least 20%. So thank you. I love the 90%, but 20, thank you again. I just had a few questions. One, what will the timeline be on this project, kind of from start to finish roughly?
So the overall construction is an 18-months construction. Now, the actual breaking ground, we haven't sent a tentative date because we're just submitting plans on phase one to the Codes Bureau this week. There was a lot of back and forth with the lot consolidations on that. And it got tied up in Dolphin County Assessor for over a year. So I don't want to publicly say we're going to break ground this year and then we can't get through the paperwork. And this is weird even.
Okay. No, thank you for that additive. I don't, I know I didn't know that. So it allows me to see what the timeline is. My other question was, once the apartments are finished, and yes, we do need affordable housing for our senior citizens here, what will the pricing and advertisement look like for those individuals?
So this is 55 plus. The expectation is at most. So this is fifty-five plus. Uh, the expectation is at most they're going to be on a fixed income. So it's going to fall close to the fair market rents.
Okay. And how will you advertise or will that, that's not really up to you? That's not your part, correct?
Uh, so there will be a management company for the building that, uh, works in senior housing and that, you know, they go through their, their normal.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. And, um, how apartments will be ADA accessible?
Uh, I believe almost all of them will have.
I couldn't find that in here, so that's why I wanted to ask. Okay, so almost all of, uh,
There'll be A or B, you know, the type A or B ADA accessible.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, that was all of my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
President, uh, Vice President Green.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Um, I don't really have any questions on this. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Davis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you for being here this evening. So this is senior living. These, uh, seniors are, this will not be an, an assisted living facility, correct? Okay, so the seniors are, they're, uh, independent. It's kind of independent living. Okay. I would like also to connect with Mr. Carl Singleton in reference to the WBE. That component is very important as, uh, the other council member mentioned. Typically, when you're building, I'm assuming this isn't your first project. Are you notifying the community? Uh, and how do you notify the community when you're going to start?
Yep, uh, so what we've done, have we gone through the typical bid sites, Procore, uh, SmartBid, the Dodge reports and everything that way. But we've also gone as far as typically any job, Facebook, um, different, uh, community, um, like Historic Harrisburg, we've used them as a kind of a posting place, um, reached out. And again, we have a, um, catalog of MBE and WB contractors that we notify each time also.
Would it be too much to ask that you send a flyer to the residents in that area, letting them know the date and the time that you're going to start? I know construction starts very early in the morning because it's happening in my neighborhood right now. Six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, and it can be very disturbing to the community. But it's helpful and considerate, I think, that, you know, when you send something out, uh, a letter or a flyer to each, you know, member in that community. I'd appreciate that. The, let's see here. I think that's all for me. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I had one more question. Thank you. Um, as far as security, once this is said and done, how will you guys either upscale the security in the area or enhance the building, um, to make it more safe for the seniors?
So this is even majority of the parking is self-contained and it's kind of, it's, it's one big L shape and it takes up the whole area. You know, there will be a security staff. There'll be cameras above and beyond it. We had got asked that question at, uh, I believe it was the first zoning hearing board, uh, that we went to. And I mean, we can do as much as that's possible just with the security camera with, with the guardrails.
Yeah, we had spoken about in other projects, the possibility of maybe a small substation in the area or in the facility itself. I would encourage you to definitely talk to public safety or captain, um, someone to see if even that would be an option, just to make sure we put a tighter seal on the area after development. That would be amazing. Also, uh, with the WBE, MBE inclusion, did you consider using any local union, um, laborers in there from the area?
Uh, so we always reach out. Um, we haven't got much response in the past on other projects, but we always solicit to them.
Okay.
And just on that, with the substation, mentioned that, uh, not a project that we developed, but a project we assisted with, uh, when, uh, Blake Lynch was here, uh, we met with Blake and Commissioner Carter about the possibility of a substation when we're working on that project. So familiar with.
Yes. I think that would be a great, um, addition. Plus, if I can get in contact with one of you gentlemen, I do know a few local unions that hire young minorities from the area. That would probably be a great addition to the project. What would probably be the easiest way to get back in contact with one of you gentlemen?
Send you, uh, my content.
Yep, personally. Thank you. Um, no further questions, Madam Chair.
I just have one. Is there a visual? I was just wondering of what this may look like. I didn't, in the paperwork, it's like black and white. It was like, I mean, I only really saw the vacant lot. I was just wondering if it's not, it's okay. It was more of like measurements and a blueprint. Yeah, I needed, yeah, I couldn't really see what it was going to look like. If it's not, it's not a requirement on here. I just, and you don't have to give it to me. That could be something you could email us. That's what I was asking to see if there was a three D colored visual. It just helps me see it. Thank you.
And Ms. Davis had a question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. And this, this question is for Director Knight, just because I'm curious. I don't know. Are there any, has there been a time when you have two groups, uh, bidding or interested in the same parcel for development, land development? And how do you handle that with?
Uh, not usually. We usually get, uh, I guess, the process, the project comes to us after somebody's secured, uh, ownership. So if there's a bidding between them, between two parties, uh, we won't usually hear about it till somebody's secured the site and then is ready to move forward with the proposal.
Thank you. No further questions.
Uh, Councilwoman Davis, that's more of an event that happens with the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority. They're the one, when they're putting together a project. And I think part of this project had two competing entities way back when, was for the first time in a long time. Um, so, but that's really where that comes from because they're, they hold those blocks of land, you know, when they have, uh, become vacant, so.
Okay, thank you very much. That was helpful.
Okay, thank you. And are you on a, a, a time constraint? Are you still going through some of the other processes that, would you be okay with us putting this not on tomorrow's agenda, but two weeks?
Well, not, that's absolutely fine.
That's, okay. So as long as we're within that timeframe, then I, I'd rather, I'd recommend that we put it on the agenda for?
I think your next voting session is May fourteenth.
Yeah, and if the, if the deemed, I mean, either ways, it will be deemed approved or?
So I will note this just because the last condition in this particular land development plan actually is a street vacation. So that's still going to come back to council under chapter nine point one one seven. So the council will get to see this project a little bit more, you know, as that comes down. Um, and, and there are a few, uh, I's to dot and T's to, uh, T's, I's to dot and T's to cross before that can come down here. I don't know. I don't have the thing. Yeah, that's the.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Awesome.
And, and, yeah, so what's the next legislative session?
May fourteenth.
Okay, so I recommend that we have this to the May fourteenth agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then just, uh, for community and economic development committee business, um, we're getting ready to, um, begin the CDBG process. And if there's any organization here, I see some organizations that have questions about the contract for the twenty twenty-two year, just know that they've, um, sent inquiries about that. And as soon as I get feedback for that, I will get back to you. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to budget and finance, I failed to move Resolution twenty-one of two thousand and twenty-four to our next legislative session agenda for a vote. Next, we have Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, for the Budget and Finance Committee, we'll be discussing Resolution twenty-four of twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving the third proposed twenty twenty-four budget reallocation in order to appropriate certain monies locally designated as resident, revenue replacement funding through an award under the American Rescue Plan Act to provide for specified projects. And who from the city will be presenting this?
There were people here earlier.
Dave.
Good evening. If you all could introduce yourselves, um, and your relation to the project, and then just go over whatever presentation you have.
Kevin Sanders, Parks and Recreation Manager.
Sasha Rose, Deputy Director of Parks.
David Baker, can you guys hear me? David Baker, uh, Facilities Director. Let me get this PowerPoint started for you guys. Can you hear me okay in the speaker?
It's a little low.
All right, so I have handouts, uh, for council if you guys would like them.
Thank you.
Will this go up there once it's up? Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that big enough for you guys or do you want a full screen on there?
There it is.
Is it okay?
It's full screen now, so it's better.
Oh, okay. Magic. All right, so in front of you, we have a, uh, a proposal or request, uh, for a two million dollar, uh, portion of an eight million dollar total project. And the two million dollar ask is to fund the, uh, Hall Manor redevelopment project, phase one of two, and to fund the Jackson Lick, uh, maintenance and upkeep to get the pool open for this summer season. Uh, for the Hall Manor project, you can see we're requesting one point nine four five million dollars. And Jackson Lick, uh, we'd like to divide out of that two million, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars. For the Hall Manor Pool, the breakdown for the one point nine four five million for phase one would be for professional services. We're asking for seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that would entail our engineering, uh, consulting, uh, architectural, environmental studies and other things such as those. Uh, you see some pictures of some generic, uh, pool deconstruction, uh, for the demo work, uh, the demo and site prep. We're estimating around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That would be removing, uh, all existing, uh, buildings, material, plumbing, utilities, and hauling them offsite. Um, the utilities would be all the main sewer laterals, uh, potable water, electricity and any other items needed for the utilities, uh, for the structure. The average unknowns we're giving ourselves for the entirety of the project would be a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the earthwork and, um, stormwater maintenance side of things, if a retention pond is told, you know, we're told we're needed, something along those lines, we're estimating around a hundred thousand dollars. Site improvement would be after the demolition work has been done. That's estimated to be around a hundred thousand dollars. And that would be to uh, make sure there's no, uh, runoff issues, irrigation issues. We don't have any bug population problems, uh, reseeding. And then if we were to move forward with the entire project, the filter house has an estimated two hundred and ten thousand dollar cost to it. The second phase of this project would be for the remaining six million dollars. Below here are some of the possibilities that we could put into, uh, the structure. These are all options. The pool would be completely ADA accessible. Uh, the activity pool would be for all ages. Uh, the new pool house would allow, uh, showering, changing areas. Uh, everything would be new, up to date. We'd have a zero-entry pool, uh, that would allow you to wheel a wheelchair or any wheeled item straight from the pool deck into the pool, the body of water itself. Uh, we'd have water features as a possibility. The spray amenities, we'd have, uh, completely ADA and all ability able. The parking area itself, you'd be able to park, unload, and then wheel right from the parking area into the, um, the water features themselves. And then obviously, uh, another possibility would be a small business incubator, whether we do food trucks or something from local businesses. Local businesses could come by, um, just as different options and, uh, things we could supply to the public there. Uh, before you hear is a, um, kind of a condensed, um, schedule we can show you. It gives you a little visualization of the processes that we have to go through. Uh, this is somewhat high level, but it does color code and show how long we expect this project to take. It's going to, to be estimated to be a little bit over two years for the entirety of the project. Um, and there, there are obviously lots of variables, but you can see each phase of the project here. So if you have any questions about that. Uh, so the next project we have on here, this is for Jackson Lick. This shows you, we're, we're planning on doing a lot of in-house repairs to Jackson Lick minus the expansion joint replacement. We'll actually be doing in-house work to do the pool shell epoxy, uh, to do any and all necessary plumbing upgrades or needs in the the shower rooms. Uh, the roofing will be outsourced. But as you can see, the, the list of things on here, we plan on doing in-house just because of our, our time constraints. We really need to get moving on this as soon as we are allocated funding for this. And then here is a, uh, calendar that shows you the timeline in which we're uh, going to be facing to get these items completed so we can get the pool open. And then our last slide here, it kind of shows you a solid representation of the project in its entirety. You can see the, um, eight million dollars as a total pie chart here. Uh, two million dollars is over to the right, and you can see each individual area that it's broken down into and what we'll be spending those funds on.
Thank you very much. Anything else for your presentation?
Uh, just, um, anything that you would like to add?
Just that everything, all these things are contingent and they're all estimates. Uh, they're not factual, but just, these are estimates.
Okay.
Things are, um, subject to change.
All right, thank you. Um, I do have, I guess, a couple of small, well, big questions to start with, um, as far as the numbers. So I think the document that is posted online, um, one is requesting the entire eight million, not two million. And it shows Jackson Lick Pool repairs at three hundred and fifty thousand.
There was an amended version that came down last night.
Right, but on the website that like still is posted for the public, like on Ecodes, it's still showing the old version.
Yeah, so it's not hyperlinked to that agenda, but if you go on Ecodes, you'll see Resolution twenty-four amended.
Okay, all right. Because I thought I had gotten the version with the fifty-five thousand, so it surprised me when I saw the three hundred and fifty thousand version. So the correct numbers would be fifty-five thousand for the Jackson Lick repairs. And then one point nine four five million for the South Hall Manor Pool repairs or phase one. Okay. All right, and then the total request is just for the two million or it's for the eight million with six million being earmarked?
So the total request is for an eight million dollars, uh, amount, but that's just to be earmarked for the pool repair or rebuild in itself, so it doesn't get used for other items. We'll just be requesting the use of a two million dollar allotment. Uh, once we get all of our engineering, um, you know, information back, we get all the environmental studies back and we actually see what's underneath the pool shell itself, we'll know how and if we can move forward with these projects. We can also then bring back all of our, um, our renderings that we'll be receiving from the architects and share them with council and make sure that everything is, is on par and looking the way you guys want it to before we move forward with any sort of construction itself.
Okay.
So, and the resolution, what it does with the six million, it actually allocates it for the first time and puts it in a restricted fund for capital projects limited to the pool. So basically, it's not there. Now, council could undo that in the future, but right now that's where it would go. So it's clear, it's not still in the ARPA pile at that point. It's in a restricted fund directed for the pool. For future use.
All right, thank you. Um, at the moment, I don't have any other questions. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'm going to start to my, uh, immediate right with Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Can you just explain to the public what the filter house is? You have a, a lot of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. What is a filter house?
So it would be a structure solely, um, solely there just to make sure that we keep whatever type of water is running through these structures clean. So whether it be like a sand-based filter, it runs a chlorination system. Um, it's going to be to recirculate the existing water that we have and then to add new water and chemicals into the water that's going in there to keep everything clean and sanitary, sanitary.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. President Bowers.
I think I have two.
I think I have two questions, but I may have more. So I'm, I guess my first question is, is related to the design. We keep going back to this design and all of these things, the spray park. We've been crystal clear. The people and council don't want that. We want to simply replace, repair and replace the South Harrisburg pool. So that's one thing. The second thing, the Jackson Lake project for this year, I guess I'm just wondering, what's the urgency to date to utilize these funds?
So to repair the Jackson Lake pool this year, we've dropped the number down to $55,000. So the reason we're trying to get it from this money is so we have that to fix the pool with. And just the backstory to that is if we can get through another year, we're hoping that then we can use our earmarked CDVG CV funds for Jackson Lake to do a complete rebuild to that pool as well. So that's a $5 million pot of money we have earmarked for that pool through CDVG CV funding. So as far as the urgency, we just need to utilize the fund so we can keep it up and running. At this point, in the condition it's in, it wouldn't be feasible to allow the public in the pool or physically possible as far as keeping it up and running.
And I could give you some context if you wish, Madam President.
Sure.
So we received this award for the $5 million, and at the time of the budget, it was anticipated that we would be proceeding faster than we can. There's a legal tie-up with the property, which is stopping us from starting.
Okay.
And so they did not put the money to do this immediate opening in the budget because the anticipation was we'd be full-tilt.
With the $5 million?
$5 million.
Okay.
And then when the mayor originally discussed the $350,000, the first version you saw, when the analysis came down, and they can, Dave and Sasha can correct me if I'm wrong, that put the opening of the pool with the $350,000 in late August, if we did all that. So basically, the kids would have no pool for the whole summer. So that's why it's this version of doing this portion of it, having a pool for the summer, and then hopefully by the end of the summer, the other legal issues resolved, and they can move forward with the $5 million to do the upgrade they're supposed to do at Jackson Lake.
Thank you for the clarity.
Sure.
I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers. Councilwoman Ross?
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for the presentation. I guess I just get really stuck on with, with the pool situation. We have these two pools, and we know there's an issue with Jackson Lake. I don't know how much I can say when it comes to that. So I'll just say, as of right now, I don't know why we don't eliminate that pool and just have the pool that is out the south. I understand people say, well, all of Harrisburg cannot get along. We can't put everybody out at one pool. I know that's been an issue, but as of right now, there's only going to be one pool. If we open up Jackson Lake, that's going to be the only pool until we get Hall Manor done. So everybody would, would be at one pool. I don't want us to not have a pool, but this is just, I feel like we're going to spend $55,000 on fixing Jackson Lake to get through the summer. But that $55,000 won't get it through another summer. So it's almost as if we're throwing money away instead of using it for one single pool. I've always said too, I understand that if we're only going to focus on one pool, then the kids won't have an outlet for when they're hot. I've always talked about trying to find ways to install sprinkler systems at different parks and different areas in the city. That will also help children have places to cool down, families with places to go while we work on the pool. But I just don't understand throwing out such a large, throwing out $55,000 for, to get through one summer and then really not knowing where it goes from there. And maybe I'm missing the mark somewhere. I apologize if I am. But I just, I hear Harrisburg, I hear our residents, I hear our council, and I just want to make sure we're doing the best possible with our ARPA money. And I guess I just have more of a comment than any question. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I have no questions, just more of a statement. I see both sides. I really do. I see both sides, and I see the need to at least have something for the youth because we know how it can get without, right? So it's, it's a tough dilemma to have. I just say if there is controversy between the city and the district, putting money into something that they could potentially just pull from up under us is scary. But I mean, what are the options? Not providing for the youth? I mean, it's, I feel like it's a, it's a lose-lose, but picking the greater of two evils, you know? It's just unfortunate. And then when we talk about the South Side, land surveys have to take place before we can even go in the integrity of that ground. So many families already lost their housing, you know, years ago. It's just, we have an uphill battle with this whole situation. But I just pray we all can treat this as professionals and come up with the best decision for the city. But that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And just as a note to that, I think that one of the positive points of what we're trying to do here is we're not asking for the entire $8 million. We, we're asking for a portion of it, and not all of that $2 million would have to be expended if we do those land surveys, and it turns out that that's not a possibility to put a pool out there. We're not going to continue to spend the city's, the city's money, you know, to keep moving forward in that area. If, if we need to address it and go to a different area, if we need to look that up, we'll, we'll address it if we come to that point. You know, everyone here hopes that that's not the case and that we can actually...
When we come to a point, I'm sorry, when we come to a point...
If we get to a point where it's not a feasible location to actually re-put a new pool...
We're talking about the South Side?
Yes.
We've come to that point, sir. It fell into the ground.
Well, that's part of what we...
Families have lost their homes.
Right, but part of what we like to...
That's why I said I don't want to harp too much on it. I'm with, you know, whatever the best decision of the city is. I'm just saying it's a, it's a difficult decision to make, but I do agree that children do need something to do for the summer. You know, it's, it's just, I'm not saying anyone's right or wrong. It's a difficult decision to make.
So part of the professional services will include things like core samples and things to see under the pool is a viable construction project.
And around, correct.
And that will happen earlier. And I think the point is, if it turns out that spot is no longer viable...
Viable for the...
And I'm going to say, we're all talking about something none of us actually can see under the ground, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So until we look, we won't know.
Yeah.
Right? And then is, is there a construction fix for the problem?
Yep.
But that's got to, that analysis has to happen to do anything.
So is the, is that a part of it, like get the land surveys going while we're repairing Jackson Lake?
Yes.
As we earmark that substantial amount of...
Yes, so the project will happen at the same exact time.
Yep, got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Vice President. Just for me, just, I know this sounds all confusing. It's the reason why this is low. Can y'all hear me? I've seen why it was confusing because it was confusing for me for, for, for a good bit. I couldn't get these numbers to, to line up for a second, right? But from my understanding, with looking at what our Vice President looked at online from the $350,000, now we're at the $55,000, right? As you stated, you will be able to move that $55,000 over to the $1,650,000, correct? Which will bring it up to $1,945,000.
Yes, that, that, yes.
Alright, so now, from there, that $55,000 will coat the pool for, for Jackson Lake. Go back, you can go back to that slide. Nah, I think it was the last one. No, what, what, what the $55,000 is going to do, right here, alright? Let me go here so I can read along and you can hear me. So the $55,000 will get our children, our city, right? Clean, clean, clean up the pool, buildings in the prepara, in preparation of opening, basic repairs to open the pool, field expansion and interior joints. So can you explain that a little bit for us?
Sure, so the, the pool shell itself, a giant slab of concrete, and concrete expands and contracts. So it's, it's always moving, small amounts. So what they do is they have expansion joints that are basically like big slices cut out of the concrete. And there's a, there's like a Sikaflex epoxy, which is like a rubberized or a vulcanized material that bonds the pieces of concrete together, which gives you one consecutive shell and is watertight. And over time, especially in the winter, when the ground...
Starts to separate.
...caused, it, it pulls those joints apart. So what this will allow is for that joint expansion material to be removed and then new expansion material to be, to adhere to the concrete and then give us a watertight shell again.
So how long you think that'll last?
I mean, that's, that's a crapshoot. Something like this, we could do small repairs every year. The, the majority of the costs in here is the pool epoxy, the shell...
Yeah, because that looks horrible. We definitely don't want our children getting in that pool looking like that. So then you got the, the prep, the, the patch, the paint in the pool, that's the repair, all the spauling concrete, the deck, the bath, the bathhouse repairs. So can you explain what that entails? I mean, you just, I see a little corner here where a little mice hole is, mouse hole. Can you expound on that?
Yeah, so that, that's actually, there, there's roof rafters up there. It's hard to tell from the angle, but you can see the sky a little bit to the right. But that's, that's part of the roof. There's a, it's like, I think it's an EPDM roof up there, so it's a flat...
I see, man. It looks like the ground, though.
Yeah. But it's like a, a flat rubber roof up there, and so obviously in that area, it's sagged and most likely some of the seams in the, the rubber pieces have separated. The water gets below the rubber roof. So then they have to cut that rubber roof out, cut out the plywood, make sure all structural integrity is still there, and then they'll re-coat it with new rubber.
Alright, so now, the whole roof doesn't need to, to be patched, it's just that area?
In all honesty, the whole roof should be absolutely replaced, but this is the area that we're having trouble with.
The most, the most issues with. So now, if you go in there and you do this work, again, I, I feel like the council, they don't want to see this. A little, a couple dollars thrown here and there, but I, I, from what I'm reading here, this looks like the patch work. Is the roof in danger of falling in?
The roof should not cave in. I mean, no one's going to tell you there's no way it can happen, but it structurally is still there.
Okay.
It's just integrity, you know, the integrity of the membrane itself is gone. So we will have more leaks continuously. We'll keep patching it.
In that area.
Well, and, and the entire roof is just way past its lifespan. So, and just to put a little context into the $55,000, we can spend that in one summer on water and electricity, like...
Yeah, for me, just me looking at this, and I want to say a sense of urgency for our youth to be able to do something. Because if that pool isn't open, boy, I'm afraid of what, 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 what we'd be dealing with here, right? I know we think about the conflicts as Councilwoman Ross said about the conflicts, but there is a need, the YMCA on Sixth Street isn't being utilized. The state, the pool is gone from there. You have the one on Front Street. I think there were some sessions that are going to be able to be held for some of our children to be able to swim, to learn how to swim there. And that wouldn't be immediate for the Jackson Lake pool, correct? I mean, for them to just jump in and go in, they need, they couldn't train there. Is there going to be any swimming sessions at Jackson Lake? No. Or there will?
We do free, um, learn swims, two weeks.
Okay, prior to the pool opening or during, during the opening session? Okay, so that gives them a little something there to do. The leaking roof and the, and the basic filler house. So in the filler house, what needs to be repaired in there?
So we have a lot of, I guess it would be more of facade repairs in the house. So it's not so much a structural issue. There's a lot of ugly things that need to be touched up, you know? Kids don't want to see it. They don't want to change out there. If there's any spauling or chipping concrete, if we have any trip hazards, and any of the stuff like that, you see in the picture here, there's porcelain's worn off of one of our cast iron sinks.
Okay.
So we'll be re-coating sinks, we'll be changing out shower heads, we'll be pressure washing and bleaching out any sort of concrete that might have any sort of growth of anything on it, or if it's just stained in any way. So we're really going to do the best deep cleaning. We're, we're trying to be as diligent with our dollars as possible, understanding that we're not going to be keeping this for years and years to come.
Years to come.
But we also need it to be...
Functionable.
And clean and usable for the kids this summer.
Okay, so now, I get that. Now I want to go out, South Harrisburg, because what I, what I have up on my screen right now, I'm looking at the, the study from 2017, 2018, and, and some of the language in here says both of the pools have outlived their, their lives. But South Side is much more, that's where I'm worried about. So from my understanding, with the projects going on at the same time, you have all of those things. Can you go to that slide where you're going to be doing the work in South Harrisburg? And if I, if I, if I'm understanding and heard you and the solicitor correctly, that this is the demo, this is the demo part, right? And, and, and the herb study was going to happen first, which has to happen before you move forward?
Correct.
Alright, so then, if we, if it comes out that the, the, the ground is not safe, that money gets moved, I mean, along with the earmarked $6 million, right? Gets moved over, the rest of this money of that $2 million, or that 1.945, gets moved back over into that area. And then I think we'll come back in front of council and figure out what we can do with that money.
Absolutely, yes.
It, it would have to come back to council, and, and the professional service contracts for this have to come to council. So you'll be in the dialogue as it progresses.
Even, yeah, even with the professional contracts you said, right? Those, everybody has to keep coming back.
So you, you know, so what, what this resolution does is it locks up the money.
Absolutely.
That's what it does.
Absolutely.
So, because the council and the mayor both agree, a pool is what is necessary.
Well, I definitely think we need a pool. But I also like Councilwoman Ross's idea too, and, and I think the South would probably be too small for it, but at some point, one pool for the city. Because you, I mean, I mean, I'm even looking at these numbers from 2017 and 2018, with, with six lanes, 25 yards, I guess, for the pools, then slides in here, all types of things in here, and, and that, that, those numbers were comparable. For the construction cost was like 3.9. The project itself was 4.9, so these numbers are, that was back then. So I can imagine we're trying to do both of these pools, and I don't, I know our city is strapped for money. So for me, at some point, I would think, I would love to see us get a centralized location and get a good bang for our buck. But, but I do agree that our pool should be open this year. So those are my questions. I'm hoping I was clear on my questions, and that's fine. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. I believe Councilwoman Davis had another question.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Thank you again. Yes, I was looking at and listening to Councilwoman Ross in reference to the $55,000 for the basic repairs to the pool. I would like to see Jackson Lake open, but I wanted to know with the, the repairs, how, you, you mentioned there might be some other little repairs that we might have to do again next, next year with this basic repair to open the pool?
Yeah, I mean, the expansion joint repair, that's kind of the annual thing. It's our, it's our hope that it's minimal each year. The larger the joint, they go by linear footage, so the more linear feet, like the amount of feet that they have to sandblast or prep and then repair, that's how we pay, cost-wise.
Okay, so that's annual, every year anyway?
For, for the most part, unless we get really lucky, it's, it's basically annual.
Okay. Okay, okay. But other than that, I mean, we should be okay to go into next year even, and, and this pool could be open with the work that we're doing this year with the $55,000.
I would strongly recommend we don't plan on doing that because I want to see construction as soon as possible. But if we had to, we can't, you know, I'm not going to say that it wouldn't be possible.
Okay, okay, okay. That's fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross?
Yes, thank you. I just have one last question. I'm sorry if Councilwoman Davis asked this. I hope not. But I was wondering off the top of your head, or if you have it on a slide, not a slide, but in your notes on the computer, do you have a breakdown of what the field expansion, interior joint would cost? The in-house epoxy pool shell, like the, do you have a breakdown of that, of what each item would cost that is going to be used for the $55,000? Just so we have a...
Yes, I, I do have that exact cost. I don't think it's in my notes here, but if I don't see it, I can absolutely, I can email it.
Just itemized? Just itemized kind of bill or estimate of what you, and those, and once again, these are just all estimates, right? You, or you know for sure that's all you will need is the fifty-five thousand dollars, or is this just a roundabout?
So we, we've itemized every single cost in here, and that's how we came with the fifty-five thousand.
Right, they, okay, wasn't it, cuz I know you said without the South, what you might put there, it was, I don't wanna say you guessed, but you thought about what did it cost back then, and you kind of still itemized it of what you thought it may be. So that's what I mean, did you do the same for this, or you have an exact number for each?
Right, so for this, because it's underneath our RFP threshold, we can actually go and get numbers, like exact numbers. And the other one, that's, it's such a vast number that we'd have to put it out for RFP, and it's, we, we can kind of guesstimate, but we can't get the exacts. So this, I can give you guys the exact cost for each item.
Okay, and one last question. When you do the, I guess it would fall under the prep, patch, paint in the pool work. Right now, at the bottom of Jackson Lake is very, it almost, I mean, it's the shell coming up, you know? Looks like there's, there's, right. It almost looked like there's dirt floating in the pool, but it's not, it's the epoxy coming up. So when, out of this fifty-five thousand, whenever that itemized area would be for the repair or the patchwork or the paint, will that eliminate that look, or that's gonna still look that way?
Yes, so the epoxy itself will be like a, will get a bluish color for the
Yes, I know what you mean, I'm just, yeah, I'm just making sure I'm not gonna still see the little
Right, so it should, it should uniform the color and the look throughout the pool.
Okay, so we didn't do that then last year?
Correct, correct, we did not do that last year.
And why not, just?
So this year, we are putting funds into the pool just to keep it up and running. And last year, we did not, we didn't have this, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars as far as option to put in towards the pools.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing, if I may. Everything sounds, you know, spot on. I just, it kind of rubbed me the wrong way when you had said you wanted to kind of redo the sinks instead of just scraping that caulk off and just replacing it. You, it may be a bit cheaper than the labor and the manpower would take to scrub them, sand them, repolish them, buff them. I mean, you could just take that caulk out and replace the sink for a much cheaper price. I just wanted to put that out there, just, just, just a pointer, thank you.
Lamont, there are two studies. There was a study done in, at the end of twenty seventeen into eighteen.
I have them both.
Study to twenty twenty-one. And twenty twenty-one, and actually, there's a sentence there that states about the pricing and the estimates, that it was good for that timeframe only.
Okay.
We were three years from that. We also got a lot of information from the youth in the twenty, in the second study in particular. So we, we do have the data from the residents who live out in the South.
But that was just for, I'm talking, that's just for the design, correct? Not the, the IRF study and seeing if the ground is, and all of that is stable.
We didn't do that, yeah, that's not
That's what's needed, that's what we're talking about, that's what's needed.
That's the most major and critical part of the next phase by itself. To, at the end of the day, that's the most important part.
Yeah, so I, I apologize, I wasn't clear on the numbers I was speaking of with the, the four, three point nine, the four point nine. That was just the, the, the pool designs. So I do have both of them. Our research analysts made sure that I had, so I, I wanted to see that, but it didn't give, I, I was looking for the IRF, and that's not there, so.
We have, we have a unique situation, so.
Yeah, I know, I, I know, so.
There's definitely some issues there. We had some joints done in twenty eighteen
South Side, right?
At South Side, and that was eighty thousand, and there was definitely issues when they pulled stuff back.
Right, so I think it's just, again, for, for, for my colleagues, I think it's, it is important that we do at least get that study done, especially for the amount of money that's being asked. For me, in the beginning, I, I wouldn't put two dollars there if we didn't, if we didn't know what was gonna happen. So I think this is necessary to at least find out before we move forward. And, and I'm glad that it's set up that way, that you guys can get that study done and then come back and give us a report, and then we can move on from there and see what we can decide on from there. So, yeah, I think this is good, that's all.
Thank you. I guess just some of my comments, I agree with a lot of what my colleague said. First, I think it's important for a pool to open this summer. That's just my personal opinion. I think it's a, a resource that's necessary for the residents of the city. I think that putting money into the South Side Pool is also a necessary thing, because that's also a resource that we need for the city rather than just letting it sit. So I agree with the phasing, with getting the, the IRF work done, seeing what's feasible, and then moving forward from that point. I also agree with making repairs to the Jackson Lake Pool to make sure our residents have something this summer that is workable. You know, you don't want something that's just, it's there, but nobody wants to use it cuz it looks terrible, it's not very feasible. The only part that I have a concern about is I don't, I don't like the thought of chipping into the money that was allocated for the South Harrisburg Pool. And so my thought would be, we're through the first quarter, we're into April. I know we haven't hired everyone throughout the city, I know we still have vacancies. Therefore, I know there's money unspent in personnel. I'm sure we could come up with fifty-five thousand from somewhere that's not the ARPA funds. So I would say that we need to look at money that's unspent so far in this quarter and look at how we can get those funds without chipping into the ARPA money allocated for the South Harrisburg Pool. When we were doing the ARPA process, the reason why we were so diligent about wanting to put projects and with specific amounts in each project, even though it was all gonna be used as revenue replacement, was because we didn't want the money to just go into the general fund as revenue replacement and start getting chipped away and not being put towards the projects that the residents have waste they wanted. And I feel like this would be the first step of chipping away at that money, understanding it's still towards the pool. It's not towards the pool that we discussed when we were talking about ARPA. So I don't agree with using the fifty-five thousand from the eight million. I would say that the administration and us as a council need to look at another way to fund it. And I think that would be pretty easy to do. We have a fund balance if necessary, but I, I think we don't even need to chip into that. Just looking at the number of vacancies that we do have in the city, I believe that we can come up with fifty-five thousand pretty easily. So I would implore us to look at other ways to pay for this rather than using the South Harrisburg pool replacement line item from the ARPA funds.
It might slow the process down for what, and how fast it needs to go.
If we choose to, yes. I, I will leave that up to, to the solicitor to kind of make that determination. And that if we were able to look at, at the funds that we have, how long would it take us to come down with another budget reallocation, have a discussion, and get the funds allocated?
So your next legislative session is not to May the fourteenth?
Tomorrow.
No, I meant
Right, outside of tomorrow.
So the question is, is there a, another amendment to this resolution that could be made available through the finance office between now and tomorrow? And the answer, I simply have to say is, I don't know, cuz I'm not the finance office. I mean, I would make the requests, I would, I need to talk to the mayor, the administrator, Ms. Kelly, and Mr. McCutcheon to identify those monies. But sitting here, I, I don't have an answer to your question.
Right.
But, so the two options would be, if you did not vote on this tomorrow night in its current form, we either could get an amendment for tomorrow, but if we can't do that, and you can't vote on this as current form, then you, then you're back to May fourteenth, if, if you can't do it by then. I mean, I will make every effort to make sure it's there. And, but I have to talk, but I have to, there's a lot of people I have to talk to.
Right. If, if for some reason that amendment wasn't able to be made available for tomorrow, I would say maybe if a, a good faith discussion could be had with the administration, and even if the mayor could be present to have that discussion, for us to be able to then earmark that fifty-five thousand from the general fund or from the fund balance on, at our May fourteenth meeting or something, just so that we're not pulling from the money that we specifically earmarked for the South Harrisburg Pool. Because I think the discussion has been that eight million probably isn't enough. So if we start chipping away from the eight million, it's not even enough, we're really not having enough.
I, I understand your point completely. I will give you the very lawyerly answer, which I have been saying since Bill Five was adopted. Once the money became revenue replacement, it is essentially general fund money, just like earned income tax, anything. So while it, it comes with the label ARPA money, you know, at the moment, it's fungible. You know, and so the fifty-five thousand that comes out of this now general fund money that's called ARPA is still general fund money at the end of the day. Just like, so moving from another line in the general fund to this one doesn't change the city's financial position.
I do understand that, I think it's more of the principle. The, the fact that we went through the process, the way we went through it and had these discussions, which you were a vital part of during the ARPA process. The, the reason why we went through it, the way we went through it and put the language that we put was to make for sure that the money didn't start getting chipped away. And, you know, just kind of getting used to pay bills, right? Or for other projects. So we just wanna make, or at least me, I, I won't speak for all of my colleagues, but I just wanna make for sure that we don't end up in the situation where now it goes from we need fifty-five thousand to we need a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So now we need something else somewhere else, and well, we can always just pull from this money. Because I think it's really important for us to make for sure the South Harrisburg Pool does get the work that it needs. From the study to hopefully a, a pool replacement, possibly with some spray park elements around it, but definitely pool replacement. And so I just wanna make sure we remain focused on that and it doesn't kind of start to get washed away. That's kind of my, my thought on that. President Bowers?
Thank you. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I think that the fifty-five thousand is simply a Band-Aid. I understand the urgency, I understand the need for our children and residents to have a pool for this summer. But it should not come from these funds that we've earmarked. And you clearly noted, Mr. Baker, that last year you didn't have this extra money. It's not technically extra money when we've been clear and residents have been crystal clear about their interests. And I think it's just completely dismissive. And, yeah, I feel like it's, we're, if we continue, just like Vice President Green said, if we continue to draw from this money, it's just, like, what's the point? This is once in a lifetime money, and this was my biggest fear, that we would use it as a Band-Aid or use it to put out quick fires and then look back ten years, and what did we do? That's all, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments or, or questions for the administration regarding Resolution Twenty-four? At this time, I'm going to move it to tomorrow night's agenda. I will note that I will be looking for an amendment to it, just to see how we can possibly use funds from somewhere else to make for sure that we earmark the, as much money as we can towards the South Harrisburg Pool. And so I'm gonna move it, but it's not a guarantee it'll be voted on tomorrow. We'll see what happens, but I wanna move it to tomorrow's agenda so that it has the possibility of moving forward.
Just a note with the calendars, if we don't vote on this, it's very possible, we, I mean, we'll have to just push the opening by however many weeks it'll take to make a decision, because this is a, a super short turnaround time for this work to be contracted out for the roof and the expansion joints.
I do know that, I appreciate you making it clear. But I do believe that's one of the reasons why we were having a special legislative session tomorrow, was to try to be able to move this forward and stick with the timeline. And, and so hopefully, we can work something out by tomorrow. I think we do all understand the urgency of the timeline, but this wasn't a problem that was discovered last night, last week, last month. We knew last year that it was a problem, we knew the year before that it was a problem. And so I guess it just needs better planning, right? So it can't just be, well, last minute, we need it in order to open. We knew that last year. We knew that before the, the ARPA funds were allocated towards the South Harrisburg Pool. So I think that's, that's all part of the planning process. That's kind of a bigger picture thing that I won't get into at the moment. But in order to make for sure we do our due diligence, it can't just be rushed through. And so hopefully, we can get it done by tomorrow, looking for funds from somewhere else. But I don't wanna just pull from the ARPA funds because it's quick. So, and, I mean, as the solicitor noted, it's all general funds, so we can just pull from somewhere else in the general funds. And that's something we'll discuss with the, the finance department to see where we can pull from and get it done. I'm sure the administration understands the urgency, so I'm sure they'll move quickly to, to find, find places. I mean, give me the budget, I'm sure I could find fifty-five thousand. I think that is all for the Budget and Finance Committee. Thank you all for being here tonight, I do appreciate the presentation and all the work that you do for the residents of Harrisburg.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're going to move around on our agenda a little bit. We'll now move to Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee. I will defer to our Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee Chair, Chair Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers. Yeah, today, the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee will be discussing Resolution Twenty-two of twenty twenty-four. Can you please read it for us, Mr. Trusdale?
Resolution Twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. A resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of developing a natural greenscape park to be known as the Swetera Street Park.
Thank you, Mr. Trusdale. Do we have anybody here to further discuss Resolution Twenty-two, twenty twenty-four?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you. Can you please state your name and how you are, how you work for the City of Harrisburg?
Kevin Sanders, Parks and Recreation Manager.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sanders. Please give us a little bit more information about Resolution Twenty-two of twenty twenty-four.
Sure. A grant submission on behalf of
Do we have a name of the group?
So the city, Parks and Recreation, is the we did submit the grant on our behalf as the city for the fifteenth Swetera Park on behalf of Char Magaro as well. We, we did work with her as well as DC Nar to help facilitate this process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanders. Would, would you like to give us some more information? Do you have more to give us, or would you like to show?
She'll fill in some of the blanks. It is a little bit more of a unique
We have a lot of blanks.
Process.
Okay, well, what
This one is more unique.
More unique, okay. Thank you, thank you for the introduction, Mr. Sanders.
Sorry if I was a little unclear.
Listen, that happens, I've had it a few times, it's alright. Are you, I don't think they can go up on the thing, can they? Yes, please. Thank you for the visuals. Oh, yeah, only as many as you can, I don't wanna
Sure. Just to hide our faces.
You mind if we pass that one down to council? Do you mind if we took a look at it? Sure, I meant like if we can hold it and look at it.
Sorry about that. I'm Char Magaro, and to confirm who I might be representing, I would say I'm representing, working in partnership with the Harrisburg Park Foundation, Parks Foundation, cuz that's where all the money, the charitable money, it can be filtered through the Parks Foundation, they've been a big support. But I'd like to recognize But I'd like to recognize, there's people here tonight from the community and they have our back. And certainly if you want to ask them any questions, how they're going to view this park that's going to propose to be built in their neighborhood, I'd like to recognize them. I'm here with Alex Reber and George Payne, who have been doing the hard lift with me from the very beginning. So a little bit about how this came about. I wanted to do, I wanted an environmental project for the City of Harrisburg. So I basically found a large lot, consists of a large property. And I learned about it through the Tri-County Community Action. And they did a serious study and had more than 700 residents of South Allison Hill who wanted a park. Actually, they would like more than one park in their area. And I was kind of, I'm really excited because this is 10 lots. So that's sizable to do the kind of project that I envisioned. This park, seven of the lots are owned by the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority. So you know, you do your due diligence, you find out, you go to them and like, hey, what do you think about a park? They loved the idea because you know, they want to get rid of these lots, I assume. That's how they, I'm not sure, but they were happy. And but the thing of it is, is if we're going to build this park, Char Magaro and Harrisburg Redevelopment don't want to own it. So the reason we're, you know, here is that I, I went to the mayor and I said, if we build this, will you adopt it? And under the conditions that we'll maintain it for five years. And, and I would say that the selling point is it's not costing the city a penny. For the exception of paying maybe the salary of Rebecca Volmer, who is submitting, submitting the grant on behalf of the city. And certainly Neil, who is going to work up a memorandum of understanding with the relationship that I have as the project manager. So, can I take this out? So just to give you an idea about this park, it's not like any park in Harrisburg. Primarily because it is so heavily planted that once the, you know, three years, once these large trees are established, that when the community goes into this area, they're going to be surrounded by nature. And that lowers people's stress level. It'll create an area where they're surrounded by nature, where they can commune. There's park benches, there's picnic benches, there's large boulders to climb on for the kids instead of having a 30,000 jungle gym that's made out of plastic. And there's other amenities for kids to play within this planting. It will have solar lighting throughout it. There's seven solar lighting, like city lights. There's also going to be, I have a relationship established with the substation. There's going to be cameras all throughout it. There is ADA access coming from, we have a commitment from Tri-County Housing Development to purchase this one lot here. This will be the eighth lot. These are the seven lots that HRA has. That's our ADA access. The only thing that we would really request from the city would to carve out an ADA passageway from the, what do you call it? You know? This, the bump. What's the hell, what's the bump? What's the bump? The curb. Okay, yeah. So that's about the only thing we would be asking for the city.
Not built at.
Can you? Can you see that? So 15th and Swatera is basically one block in from Dairy and then then, you know, to the south, there's Berry Hill. And you can imagine. You get it? Any other questions about that? It's in, it's in, right in South Allison Hill, which by the way, in the last census, was considered to be the most needy on every sector of human needs. Health, education, economics. So it's the perfect spot. How is this a climate action? This is, this is within the Nititini Ridge migratory path. So the plantings that are going in here, primarily the flowering bushes, you know, they are going to help within that, they aid within that migratory path. There, these are pictures, I don't know if you can see them, of what's existing, which is basically nothing, except for some, the, there's some tools right now on it for the Capital Region Water that is putting in a lot, right along here, they're putting in one of their drainage projects. They're pretty massive drainage projects. And on top of it is going to be a community garden with more plantings in terms of shrubs and stuff. So this is going to be a perfect, you know, companion to this project. I'm only talking about Phase One right now. That's all we're asking for, you know, in terms of our grant to DCNR, which by the way, we've already submitted. And, but we're on a grace period to get a resolution from you fine folks. And also an MOU from your legal department. I'm not sure what else I want to say. A little bit about the maintenance plan. I know Parks and Rec was really concerned about that. The five-year plan consists of, first of all, getting into a contract with the landscaper who is going to, you know, go, you know, win the RFP to get this, to maintain the park for five years in the spring and fall cleaning. And also to make sure that there's, you know, the trees are being taken care of in terms of nutrition and pruning, whatever. But that's for five years. But weekly, there is a group of four, there's four groups. We have representation from them tonight. We have Tri-County Community Action. We have the South Allison Hill Residents Association. And we have Wild Heart. And then we have the Rotary Clubs Environmental Groups. We are, each group will take one week to survey and take care and watch and clean. And we then report to me anything that needs to be done or repaired or but it's mostly cleanup and being present and watching over this park. They'll take one week out of every month. So there's a commitment and there's a lot of energy that, you know, from these great groups. And I, I think that's it unless, I think more detailed questions you can also ask from Alex. Where did he go? Alex and George. And if they have any questions or if you want to see what the neighbors think of this project, they're here also.
I just want to talk about the numbers. So we did receive $72,000 from county gaming grants. That's conditional on the city executing an MOU. Money, other funds have been raised through the Harrisburg Parks Foundation. And then the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority would be donating the lots, which could be used as a match for the DCNR grant as well. So with all those things combined with the DCNR grant, that would fully fund this project. So it would not involve city dollars.
The, my name is George Payne. I used to work with the HRA, Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, but I'm still also consulting with them and helped with the content for the grants and stuff like that. The reason this is before you is there's a resolution, which is required from the DCNR grant, that there be a resolution from the city as well as an MOU for the submission of that grant. And so that's why we are here.
Do you want to hear, you have any questions?
Everyone said yes. So, yes, we do. I think you did, you answered one of mine, which was about the maintenance. And you did say it was a five-year contract because my question was like, who would be doing the work and the upkeep? Because I know in earlier years, we've had an issue with staffing. And it's been an issue with a few projects. So I wanted, that was something I wanted to ask about. So you did say who will take it over, neighborhood, some neighborhood communities, Wild Heart, the Allison Hill Committee. And you also said Rotary. Thank you. Would be taking it over. Oh, my other question was, I guess this is a landscaper after we get the RFP, that will be who will be doing the work with, for Phase One, correct?
I choose to believe so.
So, okay, just making sure.
That's who I've communicated with and got, that's where we got the numbers.
Okay, right.
And the maintenance numbers are not in what we're asking from DCNR. That's something else that, you know, we'll use the funds that basically we've been raising from private individuals and some small grants for that, so.
Okay. And then my last question was, you did say the city would be reliable for the ADA compliant curb cuts?
Just one.
Just one. We would, that would fall like money-wise as well. That would be something we needed to pay for? Or is that just the work we need to do? No, no, I'm just making sure that, is it, we're doing the work or we're doing the work and paying for it? It doesn't, I just want clarification. So I know what money we would need to end up putting out.
I don't know that number. I just assume that the city does that, you know? I mean, I plead ignorance on that.
That's okay.
I think it's part of the, it's part of the construction proposal. It's come out and all the ADA stuff is part of the construction, so.
Okay, it's part of the. That's what I'm saying. Is it taking?
Right away, who does that sort of thing, you know? Is it the city responsibility?
That's what I'm, I'm just. It's paid for through the grant. So the city's not giving it any money, but there will be city workers who make the curb cuts.
Not necessarily. If we're awarded this grant, there would be at least one ADA stall as part of that award that would, that would come out of that funding.
Okay.
That's standard of the DCNR practices.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions. I'll start here towards my left with Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. So when you guys first presented, right, I don't know, I don't think I dozed off. But you said this covers 10 parcels?
Yes. Well, Phase One is what we're talking about. And it is, it's basically eight parcels.
I heard you say 10.
Well, there's 10 overall. This is Phase Two. Okay, we have eight.
Okay.
The two, two other parcels, these people don't live in Pennsylvania. One lives in Florida, one lives in Brooklyn. I've repeatedly tried to get ahold of them.
So those are, those are, those are potential parcels then?
Oh yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
For Phase Two.
And the reason why I'm asking that, I mean, I think the project is beautiful, but I'm worried about gentrifying this neighborhood. I am worried about gentrifying this neighborhood. If we can look at the Eighth Ward, there was, I mean, I'm going to ask you guys too. So I definitely want to know here from this community because what I'm looking at gentrification that's happening all across the City of Harrisburg. I mean, we have housing problems and this, but they already built in that area. They could have built a couple more. So I'm looking at maybe five, six parcels instead of this big old block to, that's just me. And I'm just being honest with you. This is how I feel. I didn't realize that this was that big. Then I would also want to know, you can, I asked you this when you presented, what would be, that was my number one question to ask you. What would be the maintenance? What would be the cost for the City of Harrisburg? As you can, as you well know, that we are financially strapped. So I'm just wondering if you can come up with some type of figure. And I asked you, after the first year you took care of it, after the second year you took care of it, you could probably try to give us some numbers from there, but.
Well, I think I explained that the last time we talked, like, once this is established, all it's going to be is mowing, mowing the grass. And this is 12 feet wide. Five of it's cement ADA. So there's not a lot of grass. And it would just be basically mulching it if you mulch your parks. Or maybe in five years, there won't, you know, be so overgrown. I don't, I don't think it's going to be that much more than what you already invest in in your other parks that are mostly like grass and playthings.
All right. So for me, I definitely want to hear from that community over there because I didn't realize that this was that big. I would definitely love to hear what their thoughts are and how they see, I mean, again, this looks like a beautiful project. But I think for housing, short as we can, and these are parcels, we could build some more properties for people to live in and put some things back on the tax road to make sure some things are coming back to the city. That's my concern. So I don't know how this part works, but I would love to hear from the community members.
Okay, just, and there are people here and I'll hand it over, but just, again, this isn't, I'm sure everybody is aware of climate change, right? We need tiny forests. They're doing it in New York City.
I get the green spaces. But also what happened in New York City was Central Park was once a whole area where African-American people lived. And now it's a park. So a lot of people were displaced. The Eighth and Ninth Ward, right here in the City of Harrisburg, same thing.
Oh, I understand that, but nobody, there's nobody living in, I mean, there's nothing.
Yeah, there's potential for people to build here. I don't want to get into an argument with you. I just want to hear what the community has to say about it. The community, sir.
I'm sorry. All right. I have something to say about housing around it.
Okay.
My name is Melissa Gaddy. I actually live right in front of this area. This is, my house is Central A. Our youth is crying.
Absolutely.
We have got to have something. For the past year and a half, I asked Ms. Char since they're not breaking ground anytime soon, is she willing to let me put up a volleyball court? So I did, with my own money. Because these children need something, anything. They're crying. The houses, we're not worried about houses. You see how many are abandoned around us? Fix those up. The air that we breathe every day when we walk out, if you do not put something positive in this area for these children or this neighborhood, and this is just one, as if the city don't need a billion. But this is where we start. And we got to start somewhere. Because if not, I'm not worried about the minority, because there will be no minority if we don't worry about our future and that's our children. And them having something to do. The only time I've ever seen them come outside to play volleyball is when me and my children come and invite them. I will go buy the watermelon, the cupcakes, the waters, the whatever, so this environment can change. I left this city in '06 and I came back two and a half years ago and I cried. There's got to be something done, whether it starts at Allison Hill, whether it starts wherever. But if there is no society in society, what do we have? And without our children knowing what the grateful things in life are. There should be not a problem with us in our society to help clean up. Our society, after all, that is my backyard. That is something I walk out and see every single day. That is the area that I see people dumping every day. I have seen Ms. Char try to keep this area clean to get this pushed through. So that we have something. If you're going to tear it up, why not tear up something beautiful, which I doubt you will? But if there's nothing there, they're going to keep continuously tearing it up. Houses, there's so many around us that need to be rebuilt. Why build thousand-dollar, a hundred thousand-dollar houses when we could put that money into used houses? So maybe it doesn't look like it's an abandoned. So maybe it doesn't look like it's an abandoned city. So maybe our kids have a sidewalk, they can ride their bike on instead of the street. So they have a place that they can learn that video games is not the meaning of life, that there are more important things. Like if we don't fix air, we won't have it to breathe. And if we don't start educating our children by doing this, we won't have anything to look forward to as a future.
I understand what you're saying, and I know about that area very well. Mr. Johnson, it was, it was eyesore for a very long time.
And it was vacant for a very long time.
Very long time, but I, I love to hear the passion that you would like to have in that neighborhood. But that's important because, again, you just think about this. When you start doing these type of things, 10 years from now, five years from now, when you can't afford that home in your neighborhood. So I want you to pay attention to that. But I, you know, this is what you guys want.
We're well into gentrification because I know all, I served on them boards and them committees.
Okay.
When the school district sold Schimmel School, they also pushed our kids from that playground, utilizing that playground. They put up an electric fence. So I do know the history of that community, you know very well. I know that because that's where I come from.
Absolutely.
So I'm being a spokesperson for the Allison Hill Homeowners Association, which is encompassing not only property owners, but renters alike, from the north to the bypass, all the way out to the south side. So this thing is really much needed because even with the playground that is the closest one to them is Webster. Well, what is it, apartment buildings now? They don't even want anybody parking there, you know, out there. But anyway, they don't even want nobody to utilize that playground for real unless you live in that facility. So, and don't nobody want their kids to go way up on Berlin Street where they can't see them. It's dangerous. You know, I got, I got this, I'm just going to leave this alone because I still got a public comment.
Now, your voice is important, man, because I definitely, I definitely needed to hear some of this.
Hello, my name's Shirley Blanton. I'm with the Resident Association. We've been waiting for this park for 10 years. Capital Region made a similar proposal about 10 years ago and nothing happened. So I really appreciate your efforts, and I live at 15th and Berry Hill, and we want this park. Thank you.
Hello, I think everybody on City Council knows me, Claude Phipps. I'm in a unique position. I'm a board member for Tri-County Housing that developed the block, the 1500 block of Swatara. And one of the selling points that we happened to put those houses up was that there was an idea of understanding or a vision that a park would be built right there at the corner of 15th and Swatara and cover that area. And I, again, if you go down 15th Street a little bit further, you'll see there's some houses down there that were, and I hope, I think that maybe two of those lots, they're talking about the slots that we are thinking about saying, hey, let's expand, let's expand down to 15th Street, just put some more housing there. But the people who bought those homes, and that's not rental property, people invested in it. They went out and they bought those homes with an idea that there would be someplace built for, for their children to play, that playground area. I jokingly said I'd patrol that area, so I knew that area walking through. I remember when the fire took those houses out all over there. And it was a promise at that point, and in Capital Region, I was part of Capital Region at that point too, that they were going to redevelop that and put a park and put some type of park there. So, you know, again, being a board member of Tri-County, we basically looked at that and said, we're going to do something. And that was a major selling point for those houses that were put in that area. And I said, I am very sensitive to gentrification. Seems like when we build miniature developments, okay, I look at the pricing pattern. And I'm saying, you know, again, don't demean income, most of the people in Harrisburg, when you're pricing these places at $150,000, $200,000, you just knocked out most of the possibility for people in Harrisburg to acquire.
Even own home.
But the homes that we built from Tri-County, we kept it in a $100,000 range, okay? With some, and with some basic support funding for those houses. And again, this is just an extension off of those, of redevelop, redeveloping that area. I'll use that word, redeveloping that area. And we want to continue down 15th Street if we can basically work out something with the city to basically acquire more of that land to put some houses there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I know that you said you wanted to speak about something on the housing.
Right. Well, I, I think this gentleman here pretty much touched on it. So first of all, with Redevelopment Authority, we purchased those lots because it was part of the Neighborhood Action Plan for green space. And that, that's what it was all purpose for. And that's because around it, there was low affordable, affordable housing ownership, you know, developed through Tri-County, throughout Chodo. And so that is what's surrounding. It's, it's housing, as you mentioned, that's 100,000 or 120,000 per, you know, per unit. And so it, it was meant to be an affordable income neighborhood with no, you know, without trying to encourage gentrification because the housing there itself was supposed, is supposed to be and is by mission affordable housing. So that's, that, and it was also part of just of a, of a municipal and a neighborhood action plan that, that purposed that area. We're talking about one, one front block. And Capital Region also has the back end of that plot for their stormwater on which community gardens are being built. So now you've got community gardens on top of green stormwater infrastructure surrounded by affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions, Mr. Jones?
I, I just, again, I just want to thank, I definitely needed to hear from that community, but, you know. Yeah, I needed to hear from y'all. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, do you have any questions?
No questions for me right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. President Bowers?
Yes, I'll be asking a question on behalf of Councilwoman Daniels. She noted that a few years ago, the city had been working on a park on Argyle Street. It's a few blocks from the Swatara area. She's curious what the decision or why the decision was made to shift from Argyle to Swatara. I don't know if anybody can answer that.
Sure. So this was really, you know, no one's getting, I want to clarify, no one's getting paid for any of this. We're all volunteers. We've all invested our own money into trying to help make this reality, mostly on Char trying to do a good project. And so really what's going on is it was the Community Action Commission's plan and their vision, and this being one of their six goals that became the blueprint because this is what 700 residents said they wanted and where they wanted it. And so that's how it became here because it was all part of Tri-County Community Action Commission's survey results in Heart of the Hill, which you can go on their website and read. And you can see the whole portion they did saying that the residents want this park and they want it here. And this was meant never to tell people what they wanted. It was to come and help people build what they've already said they want. And we're just trying to help effectuate that change.
I hear you. I think this was geared more toward administration staff because apparently the, there was a lot that was cleared out that was supposed to be prepared and council at some point even received designs. But I don't, I don't know. I don't have any details. I'm just asking the question for her. Okay, so thank you.
I'll answer. I'll answer part of this as best as possible. 22 Argyle Street was demoed. Nothing has come about. I know, I know the designs you're talking about. They were handed to me by my previous director, Jackie Parker, before she left. And the project has kind of just went idle, for lack of better words. To switch to this, we are trying to update 15th and Vernon. Some of the stuff that Char also enclosed and discussed as well. This was, has been on my radar for about five years. The picture I showed you are actually from 2020. I have a lot of the same passion that they do around this, but when, by the time I realized that Char was involved in this, was, they're way, way more ahead. So I had to kind of get caught up to her in speed. So like, for lack of better words, we had presented this internal, it just got blocked and shut down, you know, internal. So, and I had worked with George Payne as well as, well as Capital Region. So Parks and Rec is supportive of the project itself that's being presented to you. We see the vision, we see the need. We may refer to it as more of a passive green park. But with Char's energy and her passion behind it, I've met with Sasha. We were on board to support, you know, the level of maintenance that they were going to do. We were going to, you know, probably have that, have their back on the back end. And I talked to Char about that as well. And we're still moving forward with trying to get 15th and Vernon, hopefully in the May round for a D C D grant. We retracted our grant request to really support this after meeting with D C N R. We just weren't ready, and we had some other things come up with other projects. So we tried to change up our funding sources to do the best practices. So that's just been a lot of the differences, nuances behind the scenes, trying to make sure we get our, our other projects done first before we move forward with a brand new project. But we are very supportive of this project. The fact that it's grassroots and the fact that they've raised the money on their own, we want to stay supportive and help where we need to be to help Char out where she's going with the project. And we know that we're going to have to help a little bit administrative, even though we didn't get noted. We, we will have to play a role. That's part of the D C N R process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green?
Thank you. I don't have any questions regarding this. I think it would be a great asset to the city, so I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. I don't have any questions either. I think it will really look nice and be something that the community and the children could really benefit from. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for the community members who stayed and spoke about their support on this project. I think it was essential for all of us to hear. I think Mr. Mrs. Valmer has something to say. I'm sorry. Okay. Come to the mic, please, Ms. Valmer. Wait, don't talk till you get there. No, just.
I'm always talking. What are you talking about? I just wanted to say how much unbelievable work has been put in by George Payne and Alex and Char. I mean, George and I have been on emails at like 3:00 in the morning. I mean, he did all the content. I'm, I'm just kind of the messenger, like the scribe, putting it into the portal. But like, there is some, I mean, obviously it's a huge amount of community support, but also on the part of these individuals, and it's completely voluntary. I mean, it's, you know, they're, this isn't George's job anymore. It's, you know, it's, I'm sorry. Anyway, I've been, I've been quite overwhelmed by how, how much work they put in and what an amazing job they've done. It's like, I think I said in an email to you guys, it's like, it's a masterclass on how you write a grant because the narrative is impeccable. All the questions are answered perfectly. There are like 11 letters of support from the community. It's really, it's complicated, there is no doubt. There's going to be lots of M O Us and Neil, Neil will hate me, but there, I mean, there's a lot that has to go on for us to get the grant if we get it, and, you know, H R A to use it, and then us to sort of like figure out how to, how do we intake the match and all of it. But, so you will hear a lot more about this if we get the grant. You guys are going to see us a lot, again, M O Us for this and that and the other. But I, I just have a ton of respect for these three folks and just wanted to say that. Sorry.
No problem. There was just one more question from Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, a statement and a question. I guess this would be from Legal. As she's heading out. Was there a reason why an M O U is being preferred instead of an actual contract?
I have that question. D C N R is requiring, or actually, the city's requiring that we have an M O U to show the relationship between the project manager.
At minimum, what I mean is from the administration. I guess I'm just suggesting that we should go for a full contract. An M O U at minimum will meet the requirements of the grant. But I mean, from a business standpoint, would you be opposed to going into an actual contract? Because that's a big, that's a big responsibility then to upkeep it. You know, we're counting on other nonprofits and entities. And I do, what area are you from by chance?
I live in Inola.
Inola. It's just, it didn't sit well with me the way you say, well, if you mulch your parks. There are a lot of other underlying issues like drug use, like abductions.
Right.
Things that that park will actually create a bigger space for. Love the Hill is, I'm great friends with Tannen and his crew, and they will attest to the needles, the thousands of needles that we clean up in the area. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but please just try to overstand what we're saying. We're not against the project. We love it. There's just a lot of underlying issues I think we should discuss first. But I think the trajectory of it is amazing. Absolutely.
When you say discuss first, first because what?
Discuss because this would be the body making the decision, right? You give the appearance as if it's everything signed sealed and we just have to kind of take it as it is. But there is kind of room to work it out where it fits everyone. The community in hand, those are part of the project as well as council, just sitting well with it, right? There's more to it, just saying, hey, 700 signatures, you guys might got to make it happen. What about the other 40-something thousand, you know, entities or individuals a part of the city that make the heartbeat of the city as a whole? So I'm not saying anything's wrong with the project. I actually love it. I think more green space is better. But then there's questions during the summer. What kind of initiatives will we have for the children in the park? Will there be a concert series to keep people busy? What kind of cleanup initiatives are we going to kind of project or work with individuals with? There's still a lot more to it, but I really do appreciate the presentation as a whole and, you know, Alex and the team for coming to make the presentation. I think it's amazing, but it wouldn't just be like closing shut, like, hey, you guys put mulch down, so we'll be good cleaning it up.
I, I appreciate your comments, and it isn't like we haven't thought about them. I'm certainly, you know, the potential for drug use and all that.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why establishing a relationship.
Just for the sake of time, not to cut you off, I'm just saying, let's think of it together.
No problem.
Because we were elected to do so. I just want, I just want the opportunity to do our job as well.
Okay, well, it's going to be your park, so of course we have.
No, it's the people's park, people's park, the city's park. I think they deserve it. I think it's an amazing project. I'm just saying, there's been a lot of developers and entities that come in front of us and just have that. It's going to get done, right? So you take it as a leave it. I'm not saying that's the, what you're alluding to or the energy you're giving. I'm just saying, before we get there, let's, let's work as a team. Let's get it done, whatever needs to get done, and let's address whatever concerns from the immediate area. I've worked with George before, Coalition of Homelessness. I mean, I've worked with Alex before. So when I speak, I have no objection. I'm just saying there's a bit more to it that we can address and kind of work the kinks out. But I really do appreciate this presentation.
Can we build it first? And then, and then, because I had this conversation with.
I think that's the opposite of what I'm saying at least.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think the important thing is, everything you're saying is absolutely 100% right, right? Like, it's all about what the community wants, and that's the whole, the whole thing. It's really just, you know, for the D C R application, this needs to be in by next month.
There's a deadline.
You know, there's a deadline, which is why this is coming before you right now. Once it's built, if the, if the money's there and it pays for all of it, and, and we don't want to make you foot the bill. So that's where it's like, okay, we will get this, we will cover five years of maintenance. So this isn't a burden, but there's lots of other great ideas. I know you do a lot of work with your nonprofit. I know people have talked about bringing people in from the school. There's lots of cool things I think we can do.
Well, just for the record, I would never impose my daytime work because that's a conflict of interest. I would never suggest that in this chamber.
No, I'm not talking about that, because there's lots of groups with kids and education and things that we can do that are all positive, I think, that can come down the road.
I totally agree. And having those in line, probably we just, you know, not saying it's a bad project. And forget what's, no, I actually really think it'd be amazing. I grew up in that area. I'm an Allison Hill baby, right? So Cougar graduate. I'm just saying I've realized there's a lot more issues that haven't been spoken about or addressed. City of Coalition of Homelessness, that could become a park for the homelessness, then what? It could be a P R nightmare because City of Harrisburg moved 15 people out of the park and, you know, like, I'm trying to think forward because the work we're doing now isn't for today, it's for 30 years in, in forward ahead of us.
Agreed.
That's all I'm trying to say.
And happy to continue this conversation outside of this formal. Anytime you want to talk, happy to get together.
No, no, this is awesome. Thank you guys. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. I don't know if there's any more questions or comments. You want to?
I just have one comment, President. Your question about 22 Argyle, that's H R A property too. And it is, we're negotiating with, to be, for it to be under easement with Capital Region Water so that they will, you know, turn that into a passive green space area like they've done before on top of their green storm, stormwater infrastructure. So that's in, in the works, I think. So that's happening too, at the same time.
Thank you. I just have one comment. I just have one comment that this is a perfect example of community, private and, and public partnership. And it can happen fast and it doesn't have to cost the city. So if you, you approve our resolution, I think it could be the beginning of some cool things for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to leave off saying it, it is absolutely beautiful. My thing is always trees. We have a tree problem, right? I think we all know that and I see all the trees. So I hope we plant trees that don't impact, wouldn't impact anybody's home to, you know what I mean? Because right now, we're dealing with a tree problem, but everything is beautiful. That was just my own thing, so, if there's no.
Did you guys say you would be okay with a contractual agreement as opposed to a MOU?
I think we need to.
Discuss that further?
I think they have to have the MOU in order to get it.
The MOU is the minimum requirement, but we also could go into a contract.
I think it is.
That's the minimal requirement, but you could also go into a contract. But there's a little bit.
We're kind of, we're the applicant, the city's the applicant.
I'm just trying to protect the city, that's all.
We're, we become the applicant, the city's the applicant.
Yeah, but they would be responsible for the project. So if they back down two years, a MOU wouldn't fully protect that?
So there actually is gonna be the need for a series of legal documents.
Got you, thank you.
There is a part of the requirement for DCNR, and I'd spoken to them, is that to get the application granted, we have to demonstrate control of the funds. So that's a series of documents.
Gotcha.
Right? And, and they're not identical documents because the funds are in different sources. So we'll work with the groups and with the DCNR. And really, we're trying to satisfy, as we often are, the person giving away the money.
The money, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? And, but so if we can't demonstrate that we have secured the funds, then the application.
So there'll be MOU's contracts, there'll be all type of.
And then when it comes back because of this, it's land coming to the city, there's a thing called a dedication, which is sort of the opposite of a vacation, of street vacation. There's gotta be a dedication of the land to the city, that's a formal process.
And that would come from Tri-County then, correct?
No, no, this, this would come to.
HRA, got you, thank you, thank you.
So there's lots of process that comes with it along the way. I can't tell you the order it'll all happen in, I can't tell you if DCNR put conditions on a grant, you know, and it's a competitive grant.
They just need the MOU by May, what was the date again? To fulfill the requirement of the grant? By May, okay, okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll be fine with, with, with DCNR, all the documents, but there's gonna be more than one.
More to come, yeah, absolutely, thank you. Yeah, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you so much for coming, thank you so much, residents, and for you all staying and talking to us about this project. And that is the, okay, so, sorry, that was, yes, I am. I'm sorry, let me move way too long. I do recommend that we put Resolution 22 of 2024 in the next legislative agenda. Yes. And that is the business of the Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Committee.
Thank you. Our final committee business this evening will be the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Chair Jones.
Thank you, President Bowers. So I'm gonna start out with the quarterly reports from the Borough Police.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. Can you guys state your names for the record?
I'm Tom McGarrett, I'm a captain with the Police Bureau.
I'm Commissioner Thomas Carter.
Captain Winder, head up the Community Services Division.
Angelo Craig, Project Manager for GBI.
Deputy Young.
Deputy Chief Young.
All right. Okay, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know we sent it out late last week digitally, but I need them like a physical copy of the outline to review as we discuss it.
Say it again, I couldn't hear you.
The digital version, certainly. Ladies and gentlemen, again, we're here to discuss the quarterly report for the first quarter of 2024 for the Bureau Police. The Bureau is made up of 164 sworn and professional civilian positions. Little bit of the structural side of things. Commissioner Thomas Carter, obviously, is the head, followed by Deputy Chief Ken Young, right behind me here. After that, there are four captains, each of which head up a division. Those divisions consist of the Community Services Division, Criminal Investigation Division, Technical Services Division, and Uniform Patrol Division. Before we get too much further into it, we're discussing staff and structure. I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight some changes that we've had recently here in the, in the first quarter. That would be the retirement of our former Deputy Chief Dennis Sorensen, the promotion of our current Deputy Chief Ken Young, and the unfortunate passing of retired Harrisburg Police K-9 Zeke back in mid-March. Just wanted to bring that to the council's attention here. As we move into it, we're gonna get into some numbers here. We'll be starting off with stats from our Criminal Investigation Division. The specific section, that is our Vice and Organized Crime Section. As you can see with the data before you there, so far this year, they've been assigned 49 cases, executed 16 search warrants and made already 30 arrests. As far as narcotic seizures, notable, you can see, again, from the numbers represented there, there's nearly 80 ounces of crack cocaine and just over 60 ounces of powder cocaine which have been removed from our streets. In addition to, you name a myriad of illicit narcotics that we encounter here, they've been seizing. Most notable, 16 firearms, that section alone has been able to take off the streets this year so far. We're having some notes here. They've also seized $21,550 in currency from their narcotics investigations. Another section within the Criminal Investigation Division is our Adult Offender Section. So far this year, they've been assigned 48 cases. The other side of that is the Juvenile Offender Section. So far, there are 151 cases assigned to them in, in the first quarter here. For the Megan's Law, we do have a dedicated detective, works very diligently at her job there and she excels at it. She has made 12 arrests on Megan's Law violations, done five neighborhood notifications and a total of 34 reports just in the first quarter. To wrap up, the Criminal Investigation Division is our Forensics Unit. So far this year, they have processed 144 crime scenes, collected a total of 126 pieces of evidence, processed 54 videos, entered 20 cases into AFIS for the fingerprint identification, and conducted 19 cell bright downloads, which is basically cell phones, getting the data from the cell phones. From there, we're gonna move into the Community Services Division. That division consists of Animal Control, Community Policing Unit, Community Service Aides, and the HUD Unit. We'll start with Animal Control. So far this year, our Animal Control has responded to 127 calls for service and issued eight citations for violations that they've observed. Our Community Policing Unit has responded to 863 calls in the first quarter. During the course of those calls, they've issued six citations and made one arrest. Our Community Service Aides have engaged in 172 calls for service or, or community engagements, again, so far in the, in the year. The HUD Unit, they've responded to 188 calls so far this year and made three arrests. Part of the Community Division here is Community Interaction. I'd like to highlight some of the things that they've accomplished so far this year. Again, they've assisted with dealing with some of the issues with the unhoused population here in the city, specifically in a riverfront park and a Market Street underpass area. Participated in the Fire and Ice Festival and partnered with, and I don't want to steal Captain Winder's thunder here, but they partnered with other agencies and entities here in the community to, to make it a better, safer place for everybody. I'll let him expound on that a little bit as we move along here. Next up is our Technical Services Division. That's basically the, the behind the scenes that make the Bureau, makes the Bureau function. Part of that is the Training Section. So far, we've done one Bureau-wide training, we're in the midst of a second one. But in the first quarter here, the Bureau-wide training focused on use of force, towed vehicles, which we're revamping the way in which we document and handle towing vehicles, and then defensive tactics. A lot of this stuff is mandated by the state, so we're maintaining compliance with the state regulations there. Some of our newer officers were trained in report writing. Again, abandoned vehicles and towed vehicles as we're revamping the way in which we report that. And then they were subject to some situational training to better prepare them for life out on the streets here. The other courses, there, there are two numerous to mention. We've really put a pretty good focus on, on getting our people diversified training and making them the best that they can be at their particular specialty here. Something I want to highlight, we participated in the FBI LEAD training, human trafficking investigations, hostage negotiations, polygraph training, you name it. We're, we're getting our people to some pretty good courses and, again, that's so they can better serve the city, make it a safer place. One of the goals, we'll get into that as we move along here, is our recruitment and retention. We just recently, while we're still in the midst of one and about to begin another hiring cycle, this last one, we did the physical agility and the written examination, March 2nd and 3rd. Out of that group, there were 90 applicants, only 38 of which completed the rest of the form. It's, it's quite a lengthy process to, to become a police officer. Out of those, 38, 34 actually showed up for the physical agility, 22 of which passed the physical agility. As I get older, I'm not sure I could hang, but we'll try. So out of those 22, we had 17 that, that passed the written exam with a score of 70% or higher. And again, this is, we're keeping in standards with the academy, so they're, they know that they can function at that level to get in and then, and then excel from there. Out of those 17, we have 13 that have moved on to the long application and are now in the background phase. Basically, we're, we're making sure that there's somebody we want to work with and somebody we want protecting the community. Accreditation, we are a state accredited agency and part of that is continuing to review best practices and policies. Some of them that we've visited recently are our organization, our training, criminal intelligence and the performance evaluation so we can monitor and steer people in their careers and make sure that they're getting the most out of, out of their time here. Body worn cameras also falls under the, I'm sorry, the Technical Services Division. In the first quarter alone, there were 280 requests made for body cam footage. Now, those, those requests can come from officers or detectives within the Bureau. They can come with, from some of our sister agencies, the District Attorney's Office, you name it. They, they come in and most of the time, we can, we can satisfy them. Also in the Technical Services Division is the Parking Enforcement. And as you can see with the numbers before you there, the total income, and again, this is derived from Treasury, I'm sorry, for the parking tickets, boot fees, signs and, and various permits. So far this year, $154,695 in income from that alone. Part of the ticketing issue is, we've discussed and several people have discussed this evening, the parking is an issue. We do have three current Parking Enforcement Officers. You can see here, there, it's delineated between the handwritten and electronic citations that, or I'm sorry, parking tickets that have been issued. If you notice, the electronic is a much higher number than that of the handwritten. Moving forward, we are looking to purchase more electronic devices which will increase the efficiency and the enforcement there. Records Section, also part of the Technical Division, Technical Services Division. So far, they've processed 506 external report requests, 623 reports processed, 13 write-to-know requests and 865 packet, arrest and warrant packets processed. The revenue from that totaled $8,000, $8,620. We recently implemented the Doors, the Desk Officer Reporting System. Again, just for those of you that aren't familiar with it, that's basically where people that are victims of crime can go online. They put in the information, it's later reviewed by an officer who can either approve the report or request additional information. The goal behind that is, if it's, I don't say a minor thing, if it's like a vandalism or hit and run, or there's, there's a lack of solvability there, they can put it in, the officer can review it and ensure that the information needed is there, they can improve it. And then that individual's given their incident number that they can follow up with their insurance company or homeowners or whatever the case may be. With that, so far this, this year, 594 reports have been filed. Doing the, the online reporting system has saved roughly 891 hours of officers going out to the scene and investigating in person. The total cost, or I'm sorry, the total savings to the city, as you can see, is $23,760. So between the efforts of, of these sections alone, you're talking $187,075 difference for the taxpayers there. Fleet Manager, we'll get into that a little bit more later. You can see we put one new patrol vehicle into service, one detective vehicle was taken out of service, that's not uncommon. We have a rather large fleet to, to fulfill our mission here. 83 total vehicle services have complete, been completed in the first quarter. I can tell you a little bit of the, the scope of what we're dealing with for the cars. It is a, literally a full-time job. And we're gonna be moving into the Uniform Patrol Division. And that is headed up by Captain Ata Kokpo Martin. He is away training right now, he'll be here this evening. As you can see, that's a staggering number there. Total calls for service for Uniform Patrol Division just this year alone, so far, 18,883 calls for service. Below that there, you'll see the, the co-responders indicated. Again, that's our, our county partners that deal with mental health crisis and, and resources for people in need. They've been responsible for responding to 241 calls for service. Again, the majority of these are mental health related, but they also deal with, you know, ensuring people have adequate food and, and access, transportation to, to healthcare visits and stuff like that. Next up is the Street Crimes Unit. Again, they have some pretty impressive numbers here, I would say, for being the first quarter. 75 arrests, served 35 warrants. I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that they have seized 27 firearms so far this year. Money seized, $5,007. The value of the marijuana, I'll just give you a quick rundown, marijuana seized is, is valued at over $10,000. The crack cocaine seized is valued at nearly $5,000. The powder cocaine, just over $120 there. Heroin and fentanyl, which I think we all know the toll that's taken here, $710 worth of heroin and fentanyl have been taken off the streets by that unit alone. And $60 worth of pills that they've seized as evidence. Continuing on with the Patrol Division, K-9 Unit. You can see the article searches, that could be something discarded by a suspect. Two of those, they've, they've done. Criminal apprehensions or arrests, four for the year. Explosive searches, they're at one. Building searches, five. We have both narcotics and explosive detection K-9s. So you can imagine how they're, how they're employed on the street there, but they're, they're very busy and very productive at their job. I mentioned K-9 Zeke earlier, just wanted to highlight some of the things, given his passing here since retirement. He and his handler Sergeant Ty Mike of the Street Crimes Unit, together, they were able to arrest 58 wanted felons. They were instrumental in a seizure of 339 grams of heroin, 1,429 grams of crack cocaine, over 2,000 grams of cocaine. That, that's pretty impressive. It's a sad day to see Zeke pass. Our Street Crimes Unit is also engaged with a multi-agency effort in combating the street gangs. We won't get into all the details, again, some of that falls under the GVI, GBIP grant, which we'll discuss a little bit later on here. But they are doing some impressive work out there with gathering intelligence and identifying people and trying to curb some of the gun violence. Next up, I'd like to get into the License Plate Readers, the LPRs. Currently, the Bureau has 10 of them deployed at three different locations within the city. They're used to identify, you know, you can enter a registration plate in there and it'll basically flag when the camera reads that plate. I'll give you the, some of the highlights from January and March for the plate readers. They, they were key in locating a suspect for an attempted homicide as well as a probation abscondor. They located a subject involved in a hit and run of a juvenile and the theft of a firearm. They located a stolen vehicle which contained three illegal firearms and an individual who was wanted by the US Marshal Service on firearms charges. That was January and March. They helped locate a suspect of an aggravated assault which involved a shooting into an occupied residence. aggravated assault, which involved a shooting into an occupied residence. And they also helped locate witnesses around a shooting that occurred within the city. So they have been instrumental and very beneficial for us.
You, I'm lost, or where you, or where you're at?
I'm a little bit more in-depth, sir, than the outline.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure we have all the information you might want here.
All right.
If I deviate from the outline, just trying to provide a little bit additional for you. Part of our efforts in combating the gun violence here in the city is identifying and confiscating ghost guns. They're also referred to as PMFs, or privately manufactured firearms. They're not in and of themselves illegal, but obviously, if they're used in the commission of a crime or in the possession of someone that shouldn't have a gun, i.e. a juvenile, or someone with a significant criminal history. Our efforts have resulted in the seizure of fifty-one firearms that have been recovered. The ghost gun, that's not total firearms, and this doesn't count the firearms where there's a factory serial number on it that has been obliterated. This is something that you can order online and basically manufacture in your home. Out of the fifty-one fire, ghost guns recovered, there's, let me see here, forty were in the possession of people not to possess firearms, and nine of them were recovered from juvenile offenders. So that, to me, is a huge impact right there. In twenty-six of those incidents, there was also drug charges ranging from simple possession of marijuana to felony drug offenses. We have, one of our detectives partners with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, we share information, and their partnership is huge in the, trying to combat some of the gun violence on the streets here. So we're very thankful for that. From here, we're going to move into the Bureau of Goals. As discussed earlier, Goal One is recruit, retaining employees. You can see, we, in our efforts here, have had a recruitment booth, excuse me, recruitment booth at the PA Outdoor Show. We've placed up ten billboards that were up for a total of one hundred and sixty-three days in order to draw applicants. Community Policing Unit went to a STEM career fair at the Harrisburg University. We put out pliers, flyers, and postcards. Again, this is the March 2nd and 3rd hiring that we did here. The next one is going to open up for application in May. So I know we're still in the first quarter, briefing the first quarter, but we're still talking about goals here. We had personnel that attended the Thirteenth Annual Recruitment and Retention Summit. We've done email blasts, social media posts, basically anything we can do to catch potential applicants and bring them all the way. Next goal, cease utilization of the metro functions within Harrisburg Bureau of Police. This is something we're working with other departments here in the city to do. That's, that goes beyond just us. We use that for payroll, scheduling, and stuff like that. The full transition there was, the goal is April 1. Due to some setbacks, we haven't fully stepped away from Metro, but that is still a work in progress. Goal number three, provide increased police information to citizens. Some of the steps we've taken to ensure that that happens is publish the 2023 annual report to our Power DMS and Crime Watch systems. They're accessible to the public. And coordinate with Crime Watch on setting up a mapping feature for citizens, so they can see a little bit more what's going on in their area and the city overall. Goal four, conduct police lobby remodeling and move the evidence room. Efforts are underway. Work has begun, and I can tell you, when you leave at the end of the day and your bones are rattling, you know they're in there working. All the saws and drills and stuff going. Basically, we're going to move our evidence storage area up to the first floor, modernize it, and increase the accessibility for the public there, so we can better serve them. Goal five, you can see, is maintain a homicide clearance rate above the national average. In 2022, the national average was fifty-two percent clearance rate, and that's coming from the Council on Criminal Justice. The Harrisburg Bureau of Police average in 2022 was approximately sixty-three percent. Can't give you the 2023 stats just yet, because they're not in yet, but you can see that we maintain above the national average for clearance rates on homicides. And again, that coupled with our efforts to combat some of the gun violence, hopefully, there's less of them to investigate. Goal six, again, here it is, reduce gun violence within the city of Harrisburg. Our efforts include the GBIP saturation details are going to resume. The Street Crimes Unit has participated, like I said, multiple, multi-agent, agency task force details. And as seen by the stats here, they've been instrumental in recovering firearms from the streets. Between Criminal Investigation Division and Uniform Patrol alone, there were forty-three firearms taken off the streets as part of these, these projects here. Goal seven, maintain and improve community service aides and their integration into the city's community. Some of the steps we've taken to facilitate that, as you can see here, participation in citywide and local community events, and establishing a positive rapport and building relationships with members, members of the city's unhoused community. I'll let Captain Winder touch on that if you have additional questions. He was instrumental. He and his division staff, they were instrumental in helping out with those folks that needed Beyond that is just the budget. We have some additional stats and stuff like that. It's time, do you have any questions or anything?
Yes. Very lengthy report. Some of the, one of the areas that I want to go into, I'm going to start in the beginning, and then work my way through. So one of the questions I did have about some of the items that were confiscated on the street.
Yes, sir.
Just curious of what happens to the money and the illegal drugs that are captured after court proceedings. What happens with that?
The funds are typically given over to the county. For the most part, we see some of that coming back. But like I said, it's a group effort in the county and region here, and partnering with our sister agencies. As far as the narcotics, the actual substance themselves, that is often retained for trial. It'll oft, you know, generally be sent out for testing, and then trial. Once it's completed its journey through the criminal justice, criminal justice system, it will be taken and destroyed. And then it's basically the documentation and chain of custody follow that. Hey, we had it here. We took it to court. It was X amount of material. Here's what it consisted of. Here's the weight. And then, once, once that case has been cleared, it's ultimately destroyed. And that's witnessed by our Internal Affairs, as like a redundancy safety there.
Okay. One of the things that you had mentioned as well, excuse me, as, on the homicide rates here, in this first quarter, is correct. I'm looking at this, three, three occurred in the first quarter and three arrests were made.
Yes, sir.
Hundred percent.
So far, we're going to keep up the diligent work.
Now, I'm going to go to another area of the parking enforcement. One of the initiatives that we're currently working on, trying to clean up the city with some of these cars parking on parcels and on the sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
I spoke with Mr. McMillan today. So you, you had mentioned this in your report as well, something to help with some of that enforcement, because you know, a lot of people in the community are still wondering when the enforcement are going to be in their area. Is this actually happening? But I look at some of the stacks for, as far as your tickets that you wrote, you had a total of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. Can you, is there a way that you can break down, or just a rough estimate of how many of those were from some of the illegal parking?
I mean, in some fashion or another, they're all from illegal parking, whether it's, you know, an overtime spot.
Okay.
Sorry.
So is that mixed in? That's not mixed in with the S and P?
We'd have to go in and search the codes to see exactly what that, that vehicle was issued a ticket for, the driver of that vehicle. It could be the vehicle's position, the manner in which it's parked, how long it's parked there, if it's street cleaning. We'd have to break down the numbers a little bit further for that.
Okay. The other, the other question I would ask you is, these aren't S and P numbers, though, right? This is strictly H, okay, Hasbro Police Department, okay. So one of the things that you mentioned is about the devices. You have some people writing tickets, which, which the CSAs, which I'll ask Captain Winder in a second. And then you have your parking enforcement with, with these machines. What is the difference between the two, the handwritten tickets and the digital ones?
The digital ones, there's instructions for you to pay in a more timely and efficient manner. The handwritten ones, having written numerous parking tickets myself, they just take longer.
All right. So you get more of an instantaneous result when you use the machine?
Yes, sir. And you can take a picture of the violation and all that. I mean, it's...
So one of the things I would ask you, because talking to Mr. McMillan, when I sat with him this, this afternoon, well, yeah, this afternoon, I sat with him, and this probably be for Neil or maybe the administration to answer, looking at your budget. He said that it would probably cost about five thousand dollars each for one of those machines, and he needs about two of them. Is there anywhere in your budget that that money could be reallocated so we can purchase those?
From my understanding and speaking with Mr. McMillan, they are budgeted. We just don't have them in possession yet. That's an upcoming budget item.
Okay. Is that for this year or twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I believe.
Is there any way we can move some money?
So we got those machines through a grant, if my recollection is correct. So it wasn't the city's money.
Okay.
And there is a discussion about when the grant runs out, which is, I think, a three-year window. A software change may be needed to bring it into conformity with the city's new mainframe or MUNIS system. So that, there was a lot of back and forth about that, you know, how to make them compatible for the treasurer's office, this system, and what the future systems will be. So there was a lot of time that went back and forth, trying to figure out how to make this work. And essentially, there was free money that let them fund this in the first place. And that has an obvious cap to it.
Okay.
So it'll probably need a replacement system in the future, right? And sooner rather than later, when the money runs out.
So one of the things I wanted to clarify as well, for you, Solicitor Grover, is that I know you and I had a discussion about utilization of the CSAs, participating in helping with this ticketing initiative or enforcement initiative. Captain Winder made me aware that they do have badge numbers.
That's what, that's why they have to have a badge number to write it, to make it, to make it mean anything.
Because I, you know, I thought it was the other way around, too. So I didn't really understand that process of how that, how that actually worked. I thought that they would be able to actually write the ticket and then turn them in, but that's not how it goes. They actually have to have a badge number to do that.
That's what puts it in the AOP system.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Now, I guess I would move on to Mr. Craig, and Captain Winder, I apologize, about some of the GVI work that's done. Can you give us a little update on where we are today? I know we just talked to you a couple of months ago about this, but is there any update on some of the resources, some of the things that you guys, how is that moving along? Because you know, our community's really worried about a lot of these issues that are happening in the city.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
As per last time I was here in the seat, we've since had a, developed a Providers Committee. Providers are going to be the groups of individuals whom these identified individuals will be seeking to help reallocate, as you say, some of these, their behaviors, and get them back in the good graces of the community. That was a huge step. I think before then, we had just established our governance, which is our Executive Board Committee. And now, the next step for the next quarter is to issue what we call customs. I know my last time here, we were going over some of the language and the terms and what they mean. Customs are what, custom notifications are, the, after we identify certain individuals, we will then, a custom notification, where we go seek them at their individual place of residence, and tell them about the GVI, and then give them the benefits. Because again, it is voluntary, but to strongly encourage them about the benefits of seeking GVI, and to make some major lifestyle changes, to help better themselves as well as the community. Once we then have done and issued our agreed-upon customs, then the final and ultimate stage would be to have a call-in, which again, as I said before, our established month right now is September. So again, not to be repetitive, but again, we've, we've really moved really expeditiously, considered, started at the end of November. And as, as a person who has to sit in on these weekly GVI Zoom meetings across the country, what we've done in a short period of time is very unprecedented. So I know that the city is very anxious, but they need to understand that according to the math, that we are light-years ahead of where we should be. So please take that into consideration.
All right. Captain Winder, you have anything with this, as far as the CSAs? I think we and I had a discussion about them helping out with some of this initiatives that's going on. People are still complaining, of course, about, you know, the parking. Can you give us an update on some of the things? I know you had it in the report. Just an update on some of the areas they covered, some of the, that they missed and maybe are looking forward to going into?
Yeah, I got you. So I've been going to these community meetings, and all of the block captains from all over the city were in one central location. So that was great to be able to have this conversation with them, to address what the problems are that each of these particular areas are dealing with. So when I went to those meetings, you had, you had four major topics that all of them have been dealing with. First one, of course, dealing with public safety, shots fired, which, you know, as a department, as a bureau, we're working on very diligently. The other issue was parking. Parking on sidewalks, parking on people's yards, blocking garages, blocking fire hydrants, and all that. The third issue had to deal with illegal dumping, which that is also something that's being addressed. And fourth and final issue, drawing a blank, I'll come back to it. But dealing with the illegal parking, a lot of that was positioned right along the hill. That was, that is where the largest concentration of illegal parking was taking place. So immediately after that, those meetings, and I took a ride out into these communities, just so I could see it for myself. So we saw that from Holly Street to Berry Hill, Seventeen Hundred Block, Eighteen Hundred Block, and all those spaces in between. I was like, okay, this is something that we can work on immediately. So what the CSAs did was, they grabbed the paperwork, both in English and Spanish, dealing with the ordinance, dealing with the parking ordinance. And they went out there, and they basically plastered the entire community. They were placed on cars that were illegally parked. They were placed inside of homes. And by them doing that, they were also able to have the conversations with the people in that community. And of course, that created a flood of increased phone calls for the mayor, for the commissioner, and for myself, which is great, because that, that gets people talking. They're like, hey, your CSAs were out here. They were talking to us about this, that, and the other. And it was like, yes, we're giving you advance notice. This was done a whole month in, in advance, before that enforcement actually took place. Whole month in advance. And most of them got the, got the message. We had conversations about how some of the vehicles are parked, why they're parked that way, and the CSAs were able to let them know, like, by you parking on sidewalks, you're taking away from people having the ability to walk. And in a lot of these communities, there's a lot of handicap individuals that live in these communities. So you're blocking their, their way of getting in and out of their own homes. I saw a car that was parked right up against the, right up against the stoop. Another one that was parked between two trees perfectly on Berry Hill Street. I was like, I don't even know how you got this vehicle in here. I was like, but okay. So by them having that conversation and going out there, it alleviated a lot of that. And for the ones that didn't quite catch on, parking enforcement came through and was taking it in. So now my CSAs, for any type of community or areas within specific communities that are experiencing some of this, like the last community meeting that I went to, I even had it on my phone, they were talking about, I'll wait just one second. they were talking about, I'll wait just one second. Okay, so they were talking about, okay, they still got a little bit of issues going on from Holly to Eighteenth through Mulberry, which I know for a fact that we did, extremely heavy, then they were talking about Chestnut. I was like, well, I know we hit parts of Chestnut, we'll go back through and make sure that that information is put back out there, except this time they're not getting a month, this time they're getting about a week. So they're going to go out there, they're going to flyer the area that I think that's kind of lapsed on and have the conversation with them, put them on the cars, look at the phone calls, which we still continue to get. And then that following week, they'll be going out there with their handheld written parking tickets.
So that's for continued enforcement, correct?
Continued enforcement. Now, they've also been also dealing with the Uptown Plaza and also dealing with Flying Village, because a lot of times they're parked in those fire lanes when there is plenty of open parking just a few feet away. So they've been also focusing on that, and I know that we're going to be transitioning from the Hill and going into some of the Uptown section.
Okay.
The Uptown section is having some issues.
Fault in the street, you got a couple of areas.
What we're going to do is we're going to give them that same courtesy that we gave the Hill. Those areas are going to be identified, they're going to be flyered out, they're going to be having the conversations with the community. They'll get a month as well, and we'll go.
All right, one of the things too, that I didn't understand, and hopefully you can help me explain this to some of our residents too that has some concerns about this, if like the CSAs would see them parked on the parcels, it's kind of, I don't want to say that's where your duty ends, but it's kind of where the jurisdiction is, so to speak. We see some of the cars parked on the actual parcel, like on the lawn, that's a code issue. So I spoke with Ms. Montgomery too, to see, and I know she's down an officer or two, and I believe that the enforcement is also down an officer as well. So hopefully, we can get those positions filled. I don't know where they're at in their, no, I think he told me that that there was a bid for in-house first. If no one takes that, then they can go to the applications that have came in. So just for me, I'll pass it on to my colleagues and see if they have any questions. And I'll start to my immediate right, and start with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you very much, Councilman Jones, and thank you for being here tonight and staying here with us for this long hour. Really appreciate your report and your dedication to the city, but I don't have any questions.
President Bowers?
Good evening, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Vice President Green?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I appreciate you guys being here tonight. I appreciate your very thorough report. I think it covered everything for me, so I don't have any questions.
Man, I love my team. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I have one question. For the record, how will, how should someone contact the CSAs? Is that a number outside of the emergency or non-emergency number in case there's like flare-ups with the parking?
Excuse me, before you answer, can you say that again, because I couldn't hear you?
Okay. For the record, what is the phone number or how can people get in touch with the CSAs? Is that a phone number that's an emergency number or outside of a non-emergency number? How can someone, in case there's a flare-up of the parking situation in some of these areas, how can somebody get in touch with them?
Well, how they've been getting in touch with us is that they, when the CSAs go out there and talk to them, they provide them with their cards. And that comes with their city-issued cell phone numbers on those cards. So they will either reach out to them directly, or they will call in to County Dispatch. County Dispatch will then inform us that, hey, there's a call that we believe that the CSAs can either, A, handle or they are being asked for specifically, and then I also, somehow my number got out there. So they called, so they called my desk office, they called my city cellphone, and they also are sending me emails. And then I also have Councilman Jones also reaching out to me.
Hey, man.
What is the County Dispatch phone number? Six-nine-zero-zero. Thank you, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is Councilwoman Daniels, is she still, okay. Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Rodriguez?
Gentlemen, just one question. How far in our allotment are we with the ASPCA? As far as our pit bull allotment for the year so far?
Okay, so for the Animal Control Officer, we entered into, they're under new management out of the main society.
Got you.
So that, that number got lifted.
Oh, really?
That number got lifted.
So it's, oh, okay, well, thank you for that. All right, awesome.
Nobody else has any other questions? Okay, you're good, okay.
To talk about the saves that my officers make out there with the Narcan and different things like that. We have a lot of overdoses, fentanyl overdoses, and I believe so far in the first quarter, it was four saves. There could have been a child or something in there too, and I know that there were some people that died from it. But I like to outline that too, because it's good to talk about saves, not only incarceration, but you know, the people that we actually save. I also like to put in there that we're in the process of talking with Elby, Michael Elby, on a gun buyback program. We're going to meet on the twenty-second to start that conversation. And we're going to engage in a middle school basketball game. The police are going to play the youth, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, Saturday, you know, so we are out there doing things with our citizens and, you know, with the youth.
Commissioner, y'all need a shooting guard?
Don't do it. Listen. Also, I wanted to share real fast too, I don't know if Mr. Craig had got an opportunity to read some of the things I shared with you, as far as the lead program that can be added to the GVI. That's something that I think, I believe is very resourceful. If you haven't had the opportunity yet, that's okay, we can talk shortly about it. Are you dead? Oh, he got me. Well, you know, this was a busy one for me. I didn't, you're dead too, and I didn't even open it. I apologize, because I definitely was working like I don't know what today, man. It was a very long day, I apologize, but I will respond to your email. You got my word. I will respond tomorrow morning, or even this evening, if I can, but Captain Wyner?
Also, just to let you guys know, we got a lot of community barbecue and cookouts that are lined up that are going to be kicking off starting in May at Hall Manor and going all throughout the city. So I'm going to send you guys.
Need a microphone.
There's a lot of things that we're going to be, that we're going to be doing here.
Captain, you need a chef, Captain?
No, no, I don't want nobody in my kitchen. I handle that.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, all city council members.
Yep, so I see Chief Enterline here, so we go hear our quarterly reports from the Fire Bureau.
Who's next to me, chief?
I yield my time to you.
Yep. They asked me to be here, so I'm here. I got out of bed to come see them. On the TV, they said, I want to be here.
Oh, not cool. We have a fire. Okay. How are you today, sir?
Good evening, I'm well.
All right.
Well at this late hour.
Right? Yes.
I snuck in. I yielded five minutes of my time to the Police Department, so I only got about five minutes to give you.
Ready?
I'm good.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, so just a quick overview of quarter one, we give you a pretty good overview from 2023. So just some highlights, we'll blow through these slides pretty quickly. Eight hundred and thirty-five calls for service. I won't go through the categories of them, but it is slightly up from what it was last year, looking at quarter one. Something has to do with some of the storm stuff that we had early on, and the calls have remained fairly steady though for the last couple of weeks. Moving on, we'll just take a quick look, and I like to show this to council and the residents to see where the apparatus is actually being deployed, so we look at downtown North Allison Hill, Midtown, Uptown, and then South Allison Hill and South Harrisburg. South Allison Hill is anything that is above Paxton Street from Paxton up to Market Street. We're talking South Allison Hill, and then South Harrisburg covers the rest of that. So you'll see that the majority of our calls, and it's really unfortunate the way the county has us broken out into just the five areas. We really combined the Midtown and the Uptown, and we see, have seen an uptick in those calls in that area over the last year or so. And that's really doing part to the redevelopment that's occurring up there. And we expect that trend to continue with the redevelopment that's occurring, you know, one that you saw tonight, and three projects that are under construction right now. Average response time to all emergencies, and this is for emergency calls, not for a tree down or something like that, is four minutes and fifty-eight seconds. Interestingly though, even those non-emergency calls, that the response time goes only to about six minutes and fifteen seconds, so. We move on to the next one, a little bit, I always like to pride our folks in what they do out there as far as mutual aid goes. So of those eight hundred and twenty-five runs that we've seen over the last quarter, a hundred and twenty-five of those are mutual aid runs. You'll see on that slide is the New Tower One, the 2023 Seagrave, working a fire down in Steelton just the other week. So twenty-one calls over to East Pensbury Township, one coincidentally was occurring at the same time as our fire was on Ross Street the other day. And while that's in this quarter, it is important to look at that. We were actually in route to East Pensbury Township, turned around and came back to Harrisburg because of the fire on Ross Street. Our other big user of mutual aid, Steelton, and they've always been a mutual aid partner. This goes back not ten years, not twenty years, but thirty, forty years back. And then right behind them is Swidair Township, and Swidair Township is hurting with volunteers. I think everybody saw that they're going to try and fix part of the problem with some part-time staff. And I expect that that number in Swidair Township will continue to go up as the volunteers there continue to dwindle. From a budget standpoint, and I put these retirements, resignations, and recruits up there just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at. Thus far this year, and I talked about these in the year-end report, we had four retirements. Captain Byron Warner, firefighter Cedric Yates, firefighter Daniel Milan, and firefighter Will Turner. And we had three resignations this year, firefighter Nicholas Hurst, who was a military-related resignation, firefighter Patrick Guyberson, who went to be with the Police Department in Millersville Borough, and firefighter Jonathan Felty just resigned the other week to go into aviation. So we did lose seven. We have two more retirements that we know of coming in June, July timeframe. However, to help fend some of that off, we did have six new recruits that are in the academy right now. And keep in mind, they're recruits, they're doing well, there's no issues with them at this point. But anything can happen through the academy. I don't, again, I don't see that happening. There's a great group of firefighters we have up there right now, and look forward to getting them out on the streets sometime early to mid-June. We current, our current complement is eighty-nine firefighters and fire officers. That includes administrative staff, myself and the three deputy chiefs. We have one civilian administrative assistant, and then the six recruit firefighters. Our 2024 budgeted complement is ninety-nine total, including the civilian administrative assistant, and we'll be at ninety-seven with the new recruits once they graduate. We will be a little behind the eight ball once we have the two additional retirements this year, but we'll make up for that in January of next year. And one thing I did not put on this slide is we also, on top of that, we have currently four members deployed to active military service. If anybody's following anything, there's a lot of things going on, and our firefighters, we have about thirty-four percent of our firefighters are military, so either former military or current active reserve military status. And four of those are deployed right now, with an additional one at some point this year, probably in the May-June timeframe, is going to also deploy. And we do have five members that have been off injured on duty for the last quarter. One of them is actually due to report back to work next week. He just got released earlier this afternoon. Two areas of concern there from the budget standpoint, overtime. We have really zinged the overtime budget this year, but it goes back to those retirements, and it goes back to the resignations and those deployments of military personnel. So the good news to it is those that are deployed in the military are not really collecting a salary. So we will have some salary savings from those folks. They maintain their seniority and everything, but we'll have that four personnel will be able to divvy up hopefully to take care of those shortfalls. On the, continuing on on some grant statuses, we were awarded right at the height of COVID, right, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for apparatus bay floor replacement. It was something we were pushing for extremely hard. We finally, that money's still sitting there, we finally have the plans that we just met. The last two weeks have been meeting with the architects and designers on the floor design and what they're going to put down to get that out for, to get that done. We hope to have that project completed by July of this year. We also just received sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars ninety-nine cents from the annual state fire commissioners' grant, and we're going to be purchasing equipment for the new Squad Eight and Wagon Three, which our members were just out last week from Tuesday to Friday doing the final inspection on them. Some tweaks that need to be made to those two rigs, and they'll be coming back here to Pennsylvania, down to Glick Fire Equipment in Lancaster, and they will be outfitted then with tools and equipment to push those into frontline service. We also received five hundred thousand dollars in a CDBG allocation, and we are working on, these are high-priority, fast-moving projects. As you may recall, two years ago, we replaced the front bay doors on the fire stations, and it was a cost-saving measure, not replacing the back doors at that time. This money, a hundred and eighty-three-five, will go to those back door replacements. We're going to spend thirty, about thirty-one thousand dollars on hydraulic rescue tools that will be specifically used on that new Squad Eight and Wagon Three. We're going to be buying sixty-six thousand dollars worth of atmospheric air monitors, and that, they'll be replaced on all frontline fire apparatus as well as our rescue and one in the battalion chief's car. That gives us, those atmospheric monitors do a plethora of things for us, so that's, when you get the carbon monoxide alarm, we can go out and monitor for carbon monoxide in the air. It also natural gas and some other gases that we can monitor for in hazardous material situations as well, as well as using those post-fire during overhaul to monitor the air to make sure it's safe for firefighters to be on normal air instead of breathing the air out of their cylinders. We're going to spend about ninety thousand dollars to upgrade the diesel exhaust systems in the fire stations. Those have been in place since about nineteen ninety-eight, I believe. They've held up very well, but they have some extensive repairs that need to be completed on them as well, some additional drops for the new apparatus that we have coming in. We're going to spend eighty thousand dollars to upgrade the reserve tower truck, which was formerly Tower One, now being called Tower Five, to upgrade that so that it's safe for frontline service. And twenty-one thousand dollars is allocated for smoking carbon monoxide alarm inventory, which And twenty-one thousand dollars is allocated for smoke and carbon monoxide alarm inventory, which we seem to, fortunately, use a significant number of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms servicing the residents here in the city. And moving on, I think that is the last slide, pending any of your questions.
All right. As always, a, a great detailed report.
And I neglected, if I may, Councilman, we did, and, and I did mention this at, at our year-end report, but it did happen on January first. Ms. Brenda Cuff, that passed away on Berry Hill Street, was our first fire fatality in two years, and unfortunately, we're chalking out its 2024 fatality, and I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that, you know, the loss of, of her, and, you know, the, the need for fire safety and smoke alarms and you know, hope and pray that that doesn't, we're not putting our folks in a situation of another fatality this year.
Okay, so I, I seen, when you mentioned about Ross Street, something that I was watching, and I am hearing a lot of more fires going on. Is there a reason for that? Is just the weather, or what, what do you think?
Actually, and I, listen, I never say this, and I'm gonna say this publicly, and it's gonna bite me in the butt about eleven-thirty tonight, if it's not eleven-thirty already. Our fires are actually down for the year, which is a good thing, and, and that's reflected in numbers and fire loss data. That was actually the first fire, the major fire that we had in, I think it was six weeks, if, if we go back and look at it, so. We've had our share of fires, make no mistake, but it has been trending down, which is a good thing.
Okay, and there's one other question that I wanted to ask you about. Let's see, I think it was the CDBG slide. Okay, so you said the, the two, the two hundred and seventy thousand was from COVID, and you're just now utilizing it?
No, so that was a Dolphin County Gaming Grant Award from twenty, twenty-twenty, I believe it was, and so where we were at, at the height of COVID and coming out of COVID, we just hadn't been able to find anybody who was willing to work with us, because everybody was booked, because everything got shut down. And we're, we're happy that we're finally in a place where we can move that project forward.
Okay. All right, I'll open up to my colleagues for any questions. I'll start to my far right with Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you for being here this evening in this late hour. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Vice President Green.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you for your thorough report. I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you.
All right, President Bowers.
Good evening. Thank you, as always, for your report. I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and I don't have any questions, and good me, good evening, Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Chief, always a pleasure. Detailed, very well put together, as usual. No further questions, no questions at all. Thank you.
Thank you, and our, our budget synopsis is in the back there with several things redacted, just for names that shouldn't be published, but that full document is available to be published on the website for the citizens to see in full disclosure.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything from you, Mayor Williams? Okay. All right, that's it for that report. See Anne Montgomery here from Coats? How are you this evening? I know it's, it's late. How are you?
Doing good.
All right.
Hanging in there.
Okay. All right, ready for your report?
City Council, my name's Anne Montgomery, Harrisburg City Code Administrator. Tonight, the first slide is something you've seen before, the description, so we can just go to the next one. The quarterly summary. So far, it's been a good progress. Most of the metrics are in line with the historical data. The biggest takeaway is we're proceeding well with the demolitions, both internal and the external. The annual goals, changes in just about every permit application, and fee schedules are scheduled to take effect on May first. We've been busy managing the logistics of this process for quite a while now. Immunis conversion has moved to the right, which is allowing our, our staff to get more familiar with the system. Year-to-date spending so far, there hasn't been any surprises. We can move to the next slide. If there's no questions. Special projects. Our condenations list is being utilized by multiple departments in the city and county to validate and enhance their data. Conversion of the historical paper records is still in motion, and the IT department is coordinating the vendors for that. Department vacancy and updates. We've filled an officer position but lost one to retirement, and still working to hire administrative assistant. For the community engagement and interaction, Spanish versions of all our documents are ongoing. There's been newer permits that we've had to get them in Spanish, and next quarter, we should be at a hundred percent with the new applications and the new fees. And that's everything. If anybody has any questions, we'd like to answer them.
Yes, one of the things that I will ask you about, since we just switched over to the, the new codes and IPMC, how do you think that's working out for you so far? I know it's a short period of time to gauge, but how do you think that's working so far?
It, it is a short period, so right now, and I, I think you may be interested in the instant citations for the cars, but we can't act on that right away. It is a process to get that up and going with the state and with the local district justices. So it's, many people have to be part of that to upload and, and, and get that active.
You're talking about the, the vehicles that's on the parcels, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Vehicles that are illegally parked on the parcels, that aren't parked on already made parking space.
So if you can't, well, I guess the old codes are gone now.
No, we, we're not gonna just allow, you know, we can send a notice and tell them to remove that.
Okay.
And move forward with the regular citation if, you know.
Yeah.
Before we get this.
So we still, so we still will have an issue with the DJs if, if that's, if that's the case, correct?
It has to do with electronics. The, the, this, this code has to be put into our system, and then the thing we do not control is then it gets communicated to the AOPC. It has to go into their system for the district justice to access it.
So it's very similar to, very similar to what the police are doing with the tickets.
Right, but, but you have, what happens is there's a uniform system, a unified system that they have for the district justices, but, so, so every municipality's codes are in that state system, and then the district justice pulls up the ones that are under their jurisdiction, but they have to be in there from AOPC for the district justice to be able to activate them.
So.
So it just takes a bit.
There's no type of timeline that we can get on, see how long that will take.
It's, it's gonna be an evolution, right? It just, for, for, this was the first major change in our code in twenty years.
Twenty years, I, I get it.
Just like when you're starting any kind of thing, you gave, you passed a law that said, do this.
Right.
Now the administration has to take all the steps to do it.
To make sure it can be, uh, applied.
Yeah, right, so some of it is, is continuing what used to be, and it'll take a while for the more efficient ones to kick in.
Got you, that's, so that was my, that was what my concern was. If you can't use what's current, what we just currently passed, you can still utilize what was previously there, to an extent.
Yes, systems where it gets to be instant and fast, that's gonna take a little bit.
I got you.
Right, so they, they can still do the process that they have done, because it's still a law on the books.
Absolutely.
So.
No further questions. I'll open it up to my colleagues. Starts with my immediate right with Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Always a pleasure seeing you, Director Montgomery. I have no questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you for being here, Director Montgomery. I don't have any questions either. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
President Dan, I mean, this is horrible. Y'all gotta forgive me. President Bowers, any questions?
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, let me see who this is down here. Vice President Green, you got any questions?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I don't have any questions for you. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, and Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, and thank you for being here, Director Montgomery. I don't have any questions either. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I see, this film here, for Public Health. We are going to hear her report. Please, this is the last one.
Oh, goodness, pulling up the rear, Emma. All right, good enough.
I didn't, I, I actually didn't think you were coming. I was like, God, I could push this on off.
I'll make it breathe. Talk about that. So again, coming from the Coats Department, Melva Wright, thank you for having me. Basically, the description hasn't changed. I mean, it's pretty much the same. Our roles and responsibilities of the health office continue to be, the priority continues to be providing and enforcing and, and encouraging compliance to the food code from the federal, state, and local legislation, and continuing to do also health education and outreach. So some of the things that are new, I'll just go with the new quarterly summary. We continue to update it. We have updated the job description and actually have posted for a grant-funded, part-time inspector. So much like Mr. John Nelson that we talked about the last time, this individual will probably work up to twenty-five hours per week doing inspections, low-level to mid-level inspections, special events, and some minor complaints. So we have worked with HR to get those locked and loaded. On April fifth, it was uploaded to the website, and so far, we've got about twelve respondents, and out of the twelve that I've looked at, I'm gonna interview at this point, five of the twelve are scheduled for the end of the month, so we're hoping to find some candidates out of those people that have already applied and continue to get applications as they come in, so hopefully we'll have someone within the next three to four weeks. My target date was actually the end of April, but, you know, because, you know, we just didn't get the response. We had a couple of people who were actually interested, but once they found out that the job included weekends, they were not so responsive, so we kind of started from scratch on that. Another just thing as far as outreach, I participated in the translational research meeting that went on in conjunction with the Penn State Cancer Institute. As I mentioned in our last report, that some of the providers are interested in doing more engagement in the Harrisburg community, and just trying to reach out to find out what types of needs we have. There's been a large amount of research being done, and they're really focusing on trying to do more grassroots education and input from the community, so. I actually did a presentation at the meeting, and it was called Translational Research: Why It Matters, and basically that that presentation, I can get you a copy of it. It was presented at the luncheon. I guess about a hundred people were there, and basically just talking about Harrisburg and, and, you know, how we're dealing with things, what we're doing here, what our population is like, some demographic information, and how they can support urban communities like Harrisburg in the translational research methodology, as far as trying to get people involved and trying to create medicine that reaches from what they call the bench to the bedside. So trying to bring therapeut, therapeutic, you know, algorithms and all that good stuff that really resonates with the person and trickles down from the science to the people, so. That's what that was all about. Also, attended the ASBO, which is the American Society for Preventive Oncology, and again, the same kind of thing. I was one of the advocates. There were a group of people who were cancer survivors that I interact with that actually were there telling some of their stories, which were very compelling, and again, fortifying the need to have, you know, access, equality, and just, you know, information going out to the African-American community and other underserved communities. So those are very, two very good events, and also the state of Department of Health here in Harrisburg also had an event recently at the Harrisburg University that was focused on equity and health. So there were some folks from Harrisburg. I think our equity person was there, and there were some other folks that were there that were part of the Harrisburg staff that were there, got great information on social determinants of health. General everyday stuff, there's a listing there of looking at the inspections. There were some vacations and different things that were going on this first quarter, so broken down, you have some of the general annual inspections, some new business inspections, some joint inspections with Matt McKinley that I do, and some of the progressive inspections and complaints are also there. Also doing consultations for some of the new businesses, and it's kind of picking up because of the mobile food focus that's coming up. Usually, starting April-May, we start getting a lot of people who are interested in having food trucks and various types of mobile food establishments, so they're getting their stuff ready, and we also have the, the period of time where we have a lot of food truck festivities, so they'll be gearing up and ramping up for that. Some of our annual goals, pretty much is self-explanatory, doing the same things, trying to continue to adopt the code, looking at the new computer system that the state of Pennsylvania is putting in place, Department of Agriculture is, is putting together a brand-new computer system. Right now, we have something called eatsafePA.gov, and it's going to be called, ooh, I just forgot the name, but there's a new name. I think it's Safer. That's, and it's an acronym for something. I can't remember, but it is called Safer, and we're currently transitioning all of the databases, except for Philadelphia and Pen, and, and Pittsburgh will be part of that database. So I'm just cleaning up mine so that it will, will mesh. The grant updates, continuing with the grants. We're actually having a meeting on four twenty-six, April twenty-sixth. I've scheduled with the NHA, who is the National Environmental Health Association, who's administering all the grants this year, and the rep, our new person who is with Rebecca Volmer. We're gonna continue to have some meetings with some of the NHA representatives on the twenty-sixth of April to start closing out some of the twenty, twenty-four stuff, and just looking forward into twenty twenty-five. There will be monies available. I'm on the, the committee to give feedback, so I'm on the response committee to just see how is it working, what worked, what didn't work, what would we like to see, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know yet who is gonna administer the grant. Right now, again, it is NHA, but they've been going back and forth between NHA and some other organizations to actually be the middleman or the management organization for the grant, so whenever they make that decision, I guess they'll decide, you know, how much is gonna be available and how they're gonna disburse the money. The education grant is being used that was awarded as well for this year, and there is conventions that are scheduled for the summer, so it'll be NHA convention that I'll be attending, and also NHO, so those are the two major conventions for the organization, for the Food Safety Committee. Let's see, the liaison for the grant office. Now I think we're pretty much there. The special projects, again, just continuing to do some of the training sessions. There is a session that's attached, right, two sessions that are attached to the national meetings. One would be the Certified Food Safety Professional Update, so that's basically to refresh the certifications, and also some updates with the FDA code, and also updates to Serve Safe, so those things are ongoing and paid for, and will, John and the new person will hopefully be participating in the Serve Safe sessions. I mentioned department vacancies that I'm trying to fill, and thanks to Dina and Melissa, who have translated the health license application. It's now in Spanish and available, so that was a great job that they did with that, and the newsletter is continuing on. The next issue is coming out for May, so working on the articles and all the things that are going to that. Working also with Matt Maisel, and there's a, there's a group of health enthusiasts who are with Triple P Fitness. It's a fitness club that's opened up, and I think we were talking about doing some remotes and some different things. related to health and fitness and working with Triple P and Matt and myself. And maybe some other folks are going to be doing some sessions or just segments that he wants to put out there. So we're working to, you know, meet up. I'm going to Triple Fitness, I think, next Friday, just to kind of see what they do there and to meet with, I think, Mr. Parsons is his name. And just establish what types of things we want to focus on. So I think it's going to be promotion through the television station, through the newsletters and other things. Safety posters are being printed again, and they're going to go at the, they're going to be posted at the playground. And also, Negosi has a garden at YMCA that she wanted to have some food safety posters and nutrition posters there as well. So we'll be doing that. And just continuing to do the festivals. So we were just at the Festival Reservoir Park and just continuing to do those types of things and be present at different events, whether it be food-related or health-related. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. Again, you know, you have a very detailed report as well. And at the moment, I really don't have any questions, but I do want to say that I'm glad to see Engazi involved in this. You know, she's very passionate about some of these things environmentally. So I'm glad to see that collaboration continuing to happen. And I will open up the floor to my colleagues and start at my far right and ask Councilwoman Davis, does she have any questions?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you for your report. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Time to go. Vice President Green.
I appreciate your report. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
President Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your report.
Councilwoman Rawls.
Good evening, and I don't have any questions. Thank you for your report.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Good evening, Director Wright. Really familiar with your work. I kind of, I look forward to this grant opportunity where we can get that staff member going for you. How's Mr. Russo doing so far, like overall?
He's doing well. Now, during the first quarter, he had some vacation, I guess. So he was in Arizona for a while, so, you know.
But he's holding up health-wise. He's doing okay?
He's doing fine.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, besides that, great to see you as always. No questions?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Give it back to Council, I mean, Council President Bowers.
Thank you. We will now move to public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity which you live within the city. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right.
I'm going to condense this all in because I'm wearing two hats. My name is Ryan Johnson, 1847 Zarker Street. And I want to start with the Neighborhood Square Watch Group. I passed out some flyers, and I'm going to read the flyers real quick. The Neighborhood Square Watch Group, with spring rapidly approaching, we have to make some tough decisions. We are refusing to let anyone place our lives in danger because of illegal activities, selfishness, and/or bad acts. With the recent rash of gun violence and damage to our properties, we as a community are refusing to let anyone disturb our peace in the way we have become accustomed to living. All illegal activities will be reported to law enforcement. We all deserve to live in safe, clean, and quiet spaces. We will be afforded the same respect and dignity as anyone else. Chairperson Ryan Johnson. I got that reverse effect. Everybody was hugging me. They were saying they were tired, and nobody was doing nothing for the Hilltop community. We've been through some stuff. So we're willing to work with, this is on behalf of the homeowners association now, because I'm going to switch over and wear that hat. From the north to the south, we want all the residents, I don't care if you own your property or if you're renting. This is where you live at. And we need you all to stand with us as we try to take back our communities. Enough is enough, and we cannot continue or we will not survive living the way we've been living and staying solid.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay?
All right. Good night, council. Good night, everyone. I'll try to keep this brief because it's past 10 o'clock. I'm Darius Davenport. I live in Susquehanna Township area. I'm here on behalf of Tri-County Committee Action in support with the residents, South Ellison Hill Resident Association, and also in support of Char and her Swetara Park project. A little bit about that, sorry, it's late. I have a slave brain. So, so yes, we, Tri-County Committee Action supports the plan and the actions that Char is doing. Thank you. It is, we, Tri-County Committee Action, okay, I'll start over. For those who don't know, Tri-County Committee Action is a nonprofit agency. It's on Derry Street. We serve three counties, Dolphin, Cumberland, Perry County. I'm part of the community development team. I'm the community planning coordinator. So that involves community engagement, community activism, as well as doing projects throughout South Ellison Hills specifically. We, a few, I want to say four or five years ago, Tri-County has developed the Heart of the Hill Community Action Plan, which is what Char was talking about earlier. That's how kind of like references points to how it would benefit the residents of South Ellison Hill. It was fully a community-driven plan that kind of lists out like long-term redevelopment for South Ellison Hill. So we're in full support of that. And then also, two quick points. Okay, so last year, early 2023, Tri-County has been awarded a grant from PCCD, Pennsylvania Commission of Crime and Delinquency, of a two-and-a-half-year grant focused on porch lighting with kind of, in theory, with SEPTED, which is Criminal Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. The theory is that if you affect positive change in the environment, that you can reduce, the outcome likely would be to reduce crime. So we're well on our way with that. We've been doing community outreach and meetings with that. We did surveys. We got collected, I believe, around 260 surveys from residents in South Ellison Hill. And we are currently, and out of those surveys, people wrote in kind of like their general area of location of where they lived, as well as their thoughts and perceptions on crime and fear of crime in the area. That allowed us to pick a treatment area, and we currently have two treatment areas. One on Vernon Street, 13th to 17th, and then also on Thompson Street, 13th to 17th. The idea is to, we've already started asking residents for, not asking, but we've been handing out porch lights. I think Vernon Street, our first round, we got like around like 25% of residents received a porch light, and then I think on Thompson Street, it is smaller. There's not a lot of houses. But we got three, three people received light bulbs last week. So that's ongoing, and the goal is to monitor that over the next year and a half or so to kind of monitor the changes and see.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Oh, can I say one more thing? Or no? Am I not? Oh, okay. Lastly, sorry, we're also doing a part of Heart of the Hill in our action plan. We're doing Restaurant Row. We're changing, we're trying to change the perception. No, he's just here. We're changing the perception of Ellison Hill from, you know, we all know how the conditions are. We're changing it through food and culture. So if anyone has any questions about Heart of the Hill, PCCD, or our Restaurant Row idea, please talk to me after. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment?
Yes, I would, President Bowers.
Okay, Mayor Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bowers, Vice President Green, council members. As I've been watching Pressure Luck, I heard that I was needed at this meeting. I understand my administration from Parks and Recreation and also Facilities was here tonight to present to you the pool. And what option one and option two. I don't know if they gave you option two, but I think they gave you option one, right? And while in discussion on the telephone, I understand Ms. Rawls, Ms. Bowers, and Ms. Green, you were concerned about spending $55,000, which is a mere drop in the bucket. Now, when I made a pledge as the mayor for this city of Harrisburg, it was to bring this city together for 30 years. It's been divided. And when I hear from you tonight, I'm disappointed because you again, you again, have divided this community. When you state that, you know, you didn't want to take $55,000 out of the money that was allocated for the Hall Manor Pool, it's not a concern to me about taking $55,000 out of $13 million. Realistically, you should be ashamed of yourself. We are here today, myself as the mayor, you as the council members, to provide services to this community. You are legislative body assembly to make decisions in the best interest of them. Our kids do not have a pool. Right now, our kids do not have a pool at all. Because of you, last year, instead of waiting at the exact moment that I gave you the information for the ARPA funding, you waited a year. So now, I'm at a time point. Our kids do not have a pool. I need a pool open. I don't need them to try to go out to Friendship Center. They may not be invited to come in. They shouldn't have to go out there. We have two pools here. For two years, we have not been able to use the Hall Manor Pool. I've been on this council 16 years, and $150,000 each year for each pool adds up to about $5.9 million that we have spent trying to repair these pools. We need to open a pool for them for this summer. I don't care if it's at the Jackson Lake. I don't care if it's at the Hall Manor, but you cannot do the Hall Manor. We have to do the proper testing of the soil. We need a contractor out there. We need an engineer out there to make sure it's safe. We have sinkholes out there. But we need to open the pool. And $55,000 is not a lot of money. I'm not taking it out of the general budget because if you don't know, we have not received any money for the parking authority. We have numerous cases of litigation. Okay? So we have to be very careful how we spend our money here this year. You said take it out of the vacant positions that we have? No, I cannot do that as well. Because that money is allocated to make sure we continue to provide the service to the cities, city residents here. So please think about that. Now, maybe they did not understand, so I have invited you all numerous times to come up to my office. I would wait 5:30, 6:30, doesn't matter. I don't leave here till 7:00 to 7:30 at night. So you all have a job, and it's over at 5:00. I'm here for you. There's no reason that you cannot come up and understand what I want to do about opening these pools. Now, if you don't want the kids to have a place to swim, then be so be it. But I hope the residents of City Harrisburg parents come down here and monitor and knock at your doors. Because it's important our kids have a place where they can cool off for the summer and have enjoyment. And that's all I have to say. If you want to meet with me, I'm here tomorrow till 2 o'clock. And then Thursday and Friday, I'm here till whatever time. If you want me to be available, I will be available. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I think we all would like an opportunity to respond. Let me say this.
Well, you're going to respond anyway, and you already responded when you made a statement on TV saying, oh, we thought this would happen, went to the ARPA money.
No, wait, let me clarify. You had an opportunity to speak, so I'd like to respond. And I believe Vice President Green and Councilwoman Rawls, and I'm not sure who else, may want to respond.
Well, good, because this is the debate, because you respond when I'm not here. So now I'm here to respond back to you.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'll listen to you.
No need for the energy.
No, you had the energy when you said what you said on TV.
Okay, I'm not going to go back and forth. I'd just like to respond and move on. The hour is late. So first, I think we're all very clear on our role, so I don't think an overview is necessary. You mentioned that we waited a year after you shared your proposal. However, and we won't rehash anything, we can roll the tapes for that. The initial letter, memorandum, whatever you like to call it, we received was very vague. It did not outline any of the programming that was shared. So as a result, we did our due diligence. You hosted public town hall meetings to hear from residents and members of the public on the proposal and the funding. And we did our due diligence as well. Through those town hall meetings, we heard from residents and members of the public that they wanted to repair the South Harrisburg Pool, replace and repair the pool. That was repeated throughout the town hall meetings that we held. So we're merely listening to what the residents need. Now, as we, as I mentioned earlier, we mentioned, we understand the urgency and the need for a pool to be open this summer. However, the $55,000 should not come from the allocation for the South Harrisburg Pool to replace and repair. And we continue to receive information on a spray park and all of these other hypotheticals. When the residents were clear, replace and repair the pool. Now, we understand that the soil study is needed. We're well aware of the steps that are necessary for that process. So I just, I feel that we are doing our due diligence. If we find the $55,000 from some other area, I think members would be agreeable. That's what I believe I heard earlier during the discussion. But I'll defer to them to speak for themselves. But I just wanted an opportunity to respond to let you know that we're well aware of our role and we're open to communicate. So.
Well, that's not true. You're not open to communicate. And the second thing, I have to be concerned about what your role is because sometimes you don't, you don't serve in that role. And third, let me say this to you. I understand they said they wanted the Hall Manor Pool to be repaired, like they wanted the Hall Manor Pool to be repaired for 16 years. That also should include the other pool at Jackson Lake. We're not just going to repool one, I mean, repair one pool. We need to repair both pools. But right now, obviously, we cannot do anything with the Hall Manor Pool. But we can make an effort to try to accommodate the children of this city of Harrisburg by opening one pool for the summer. And that's all I'm requesting, that we open at least one pool for the summer. Now, the spray park is an addition. Because of the children who are toddlers, we did not want them in the little surf pool because we found out there was a lot of accidents with those kids falling in the pool, hitting their head, some falling, hitting their face trying to get out of the pool. So that's why we included the spray park. Also, we are going to have a pool. It's not going to be six feet. It's going to be four feet for each pools that we do. So that is what we're doing. I understand what the residents said, and I'm going to try to accommodate them. But I'm saying to you, as council members, $55,000 is a mere drop in the bucket to replace some of the things that we need to do in the Jackson Lake apartment pool. And that is the epoxy at the bottom. We also need to fix the counter. And we also need to fix the, some of the boards inside of the pool area. So that's what we're asking, the plumbing and the showerheads in the bathhouse and also the concession stand. That's with the $55,000. I'm not taking it out of the general budget. If we take it out of the general, well, all the money goes in the general budget anyway. But I'm not taking the $55,000 out of the regular general budget that I need to provide for the services of the citizens of Harrisburg. Ms. Rawls?
Vice President. Councilwoman Rawls.
Okay, well, good evening again, Mayor Williams. Okay, well, good evening again, Mayor Williams. Um, since I've been on council, the most important thing to me is the pools. I've been working with who used to be the director of Parks and Rec to make sure the pools are updated and are open because I know that it is a huge concern for our community, but a need for our community, for our kids to have a place to go swimming every single summer. Because in prior years, they have not been accepted in other communities. So I understand that a pool in our community is very important and is recreation for them. I also understand that they need to learn how to swim, that that is a skill that a lot of them don't have opportunities to be able to learn how to do. So I am in full support of always opening a pool. I wish we could open too, but I know it's always been an issue over the years with money and upkeep and how it has drained money from the city. So my issue was just with the fifty-five thousand dollars, okay? What is that going to go to? Is that just going to be a Band-Aid on the pool for this summer? And the next summer, it's another fifty-five thousand dollars and then another fifty-five thousand dollars? My thing is, I just wanted a clear plan, so moving forward, our residents have a vision, we have a vision, it's a checks and balance. It's not to say you are not doing your due diligence, it's not to say your administration is not doing their due diligence. But I feel my role up here on city council is to one, speak for the residents who are not here and two, to make sure there's a checks and balance for why money is being spent the way it is. So it was not ever to not open a pool. The pool needs to be open. I just want there to be a clear plan on what the next steps are for what's going to happen with Jackson Lake and what is going to happen with the pool that's in the south, uh, in South Harrisburg. Which I do know one is that we're going to be doing a land surveys to see if we can even open up or have a pool in South Harrisburg.
Exactly, because of the sinkholes.
So, e- exactly. So then, if that's true and we can't have one there, then what happens with Jackson Lake? Still, a clear vision and a clear plan of here goes step A. This is what we're going to do this summer, but please let you know that there is B, this is the next steps following out. Everyone needs a vision and a plan so we know where to go. And that, for me, is my responsibility with the checks and balances and speaking for the residents of Harrisburg.
Well, for, um, your information, uh, I don't know if they presented that, uh, information right to you tonight, but five point one million dollars is allocated under the community development block grant money for the Jackson Lake Pool. But there are circumstances legally that we are now involved in with the Jackson Lake Pool, with the Harrisburg School District. So we have to put everything on hold after we allow the kids to have the summer of swimming there. Because we may not be able to do any type of renovations at this point. Now, if you want to meet with me, I can go in further detail, but I won't do it on TV because the information is not, you know, confirmed yet.
Which is fine, which is why I didn't speak about, I do understand all of that, but I had said early in the meeting, I said, I don't know what I can speak on, but I know there is an issue. And there again, I say, we're putting fifty-five thousand dollars out.
Do you want to put fifty-five thousand dollars in the pool or do you want the pool not to open?
Well, if something goes wrong and we have no pool at all to open, we're still in that.
It's going to be able to open.
We're still in that situation next year. So what if next year we open no pool? That's why I'm saying a vision, a laid-out plan. I, the pool is important. It's number one and I, and I totally understand that. I just need a vision, I need a plan, I need an understanding of when we use the fifty-five thousand dollars to open it this summer. That was my only thing, but I don't want to take time from, um, Vice President Green.
If we cannot open it next year, of course, by September, we would be looking for another area to open up a pool. But right now, we think we can open up both pools next year if on schedule, if approved.
Okay.
Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you for being here, Mayor. I do appreciate you coming to tonight's meeting, um, to address this issue. You're always welcome. Glad to see you. Um, I would just say that, uh, I'll just start with this. Um, I don't know exactly what message was relayed to you, uh, but I think most people here had the sentiment of they want to see the pool open. I don't think that was ever the question, like, don't open Jackson Lake. No, we want to see it open. Uh, we just want to make for sure that the money that was originally allocated for the South Harrisburg Pool doesn't end up diluted where we don't have the funds to complete that, right? That was, that was one point. Um, and I just hope that the residents of Harrisburg don't end up with no pool because we're in a head ramming competition, because that makes no sense at all. I think we're all trying to work together to make for sure that there is a pool open, um, and just looking for different ways to fund it. Understanding that technically all the money is in the general fund right now, uh, but just trying to make for sure that in the end, we don't end up spending money for the south that we originally wanted to repair or replace the South Harrisburg Pool, where we end up many years down the line without the pool being able to be repaired or replaced. Because, I mean, this is a conversation that we've had for many years, right? Wanting to get that pool redone. We've known for many years that there are leaks, there are cracks, there's work that needs to be done, um, and it just was never the opportunity.
You didn't have the funding.
Right, there, there was never the opportunity.
You couldn't borrow, you didn't have the funding. We're under Act forty-seven, we can't do a bond deal.
But now we're in the position where we were able to allocate some funds, understanding that that might not be enough funds to complete the entire project, right? That's something that we've heard along the process, that we may still need to look for more funds. Um, it's just trying to make for sure we're being prudent and not diluting the little funds we have to start with.
Thirteen million, you're taking fifty-five thousand out of thirteen million dollars, come on.
It's eight million for the pool. And, right, but if we look at the other programs, right, but in that case, then we could have said, let's allocate money from one of the other programs that was in the ARPA, right? It, it was different, all sorts of different options that we could have looked at. And I think for us, we're just saying, how about we look at some of the different options to make for sure that we air mark as much money as we can for the South Harrisburg Pool because we know that's something that we want to get done for the residents.
And you, and you have to understand, and you must know, that we're not receiving any funding from the parking. Also, most of your businesses downtown are asking for reassessments.
We do know that.
That's a lot of money that we're going to lose. So I'm not taking money out of general fund, but I have to be very careful about my spending. No vacancies are being filled right now. We have to be careful in the next six or seven months, how we spend money to be able to provide services for these residents. I'm not taking fifty-five thousand out of general fund when I have money from the ARPA money, which is to provide for services that cities and states were not able to do because they didn't have any money. So I'm telling you right now, what's important? Taking fifty-five thousand from thirteen million dollars or no pool at all. So you guys decide and I thank you.
Can I provide a suggested peace offering?
Of course, no.
I'm available, I'm available tomorrow.
Sure, sure.
I'm available tomorrow.
It's only ten twenty-six. We come at ten to just argue.
The only thing I would say is, if you recall, when we moved the money to revenue replacement, that was more money left in ARPA than you itemized. So there was another pot, so if you do that, you have a part of ARPA that's not dedicated to anything right now. And I'm saying so that, like, you're, it's still there. Enough money is still there for the whole eight million on the other side of it, I'm saying. That, so just a way to, it's just a different lens to the same problem.
Exactly. All I'm asking is that we air mark the full amount for the pool and then we can use the rest of the money towards this if that's necessary.
You're going to need more than eight million, really.
Right, but we.
Can I ask a question about the five million? What is it? Is, is this not guaranteed money to come in for, for Jackson Lake Pool?
It's, 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 it's an award, we're just having a problem with title to the property.
Say it again.
We're having problems with the legal title to the property. Before the government, federal government will let us put the money into it, we got to resolve a title problem.
So is there a possibility that money can go completely away?
No.
The five million?
No, 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 we don't understand that.
I, I don't think it's a realistic possibility. As a lawyer, I'm going to tell you it's illegal.
I'll, I'll, um, I, I get it. I'll have a, I'll ask you.
We'll have to discuss it.
Yeah.
Off camera, please. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, is there anything else? Any further commentary or discussions or any more arguments?
They'll give you your quarterly reports, uh, through email, hard, hard copies, okay, until the budget. They will. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just so in case nobody heard that, um, the, the department directors and bureau directors will no longer participate in, or be allowed to participate in the city council quarterly reporting. Uh, we will receive the documentation via email and so, there we go. Transparency and communication. Okay, the time is ten twenty-nine P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Thank you. Have a good evening.